Good evening and welcome to the August 9th regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. This is a public meeting, and if any members of the public would like to make a comment on any item, there are several ways. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand icon and the public comment, when the public comment period opens, you'll be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting, press star nine when it's time for public comments. Again, you'll be unmuted and you'll have three minutes. And if you're in attendance, you can approach the podium and make your comment. Please state your name. Again, you'll have three minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order. Deputy Director Dart, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Chair Visaid Elcock?
Here.
Vice Chair Davies?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Tegney?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Thank you.
And at the staffs table, we have Deputy Director of Community Development, Jennifer Dart. We have Dila Freitas, Senior Planner, and Joe Matier, Senior Planner. Did I get those titles correct? All right. Moving on to oral communications, this time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on the tonight's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any requests that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for future agenda or referred to staff. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to address something that's not on the commission, not on our agenda? Hold on one second.
Yes, I just wanted to speak briefly and say that reasonable people can and should disagree about decisions like the Gateway Area Plan. It's what makes the democratic process work. However, in response to comments that were made at our last meeting, I want to oppose in the strongest possible terms anything that seeks to make a certain group of people into others and then use that as a basis to deny them an opportunity to take part in our deliberations. Othering people, including because of where they're from, serves only to divide us at a time when there is far too much division in our country. Silencing people is frankly un-American and works against the goals of this commission. We're all here because of our love for this community. That kind of love welcomes and encourages all people to engage in the process regardless of who they are or where they come from.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's well said. My name is James Becker, and I am speaking concerning the L Street Bike Path, which I don't think directly relates to the business items tonight. I've spoke of it before, but just in a little different light. So, the L Street path is an existing right-of-way of the proposed Gateway Area. L Street one-way cuplet would ultimately reduce the potential right-of-way and paving over and filling wetlands and narrowing the footprint. Gateway Policy 6F calls for no net wetlands, loss of wetlands, but does delineate between low-quality and high-quality wetlands. Ultimately, the policy would promote wetland banking. South of 7th Street and east of the L Street path is a linear wetland that supports a healthy frog habitat. In addition, south of A Street and east of the path is a number of wetlands which can serve as natural features and enhance the trail network, a trail network that can fulfill the goal of providing a high-quality trail and open spaces within 200 yards of every residential unit within the proposed plan area. That particular area that I described is proposed up to 1,100 units. L Street path can serve as a linear park and a green belt and can be further enhanced by daylighting of Jolly Giant Creek as proposed in GA 6A. It would be a missed opportunity to not fully utilize the L Street corner for no linear park, as it will serve the gateway infill, welcome visitors from the eventual Greatway Redwood Trail, and represent a link between parks to the north and the wildlife sanctuary to the south. In addition, active recreation features within the L Street path can fulfill GA 6D. Enhancements of the rail to trail recreation within answers to trail recreation. And I hope when the subject comes before, this L Street comes before the commission, you'll see the merit in a greenbelt enhancement over a road expansion. Thank you.
Jane Woodward. I did send you comments in advance, and I know you have been given printed copies as well. So I don't want to just read them to you. However, I want to point out a couple of things that I think it's important to know. And starting from the bottom up, these guidelines and current subdivisions within the Gateway Plan are simpler proposal. We could change them. They're not set in stone. If we want to have different subdivisions within the Gateway Area, we can do that. So, for example, if we want, or will allow, eight-story buildings, they could all be along Samoa Boulevard or in an area where they won't be visible, maybe back where the timber area is, the lumber mill. But I think you don't have to take these things as givens. We have the ability to reconfigure however we wish and look at it from a standpoint of what's going to meet our standards in terms of what kind of community we want. So we don't have to do a form-based code. We have to have objective standards. A form-based code is a useful tool, but it implies a certain form of decision-making, which we don't, as David commented along in the past, we don't have to have a form-based code with ministerial decision-making. We can simply develop objective standards and retain our customary planning commission and council review. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. The key is specific objective standards. And just as an aside, I tried to find the municipal zoning code today on the website. I couldn't find it. I found the municipal code, but I did not find the specific zoning standards that are currently in force. All the preferences are to state specifications, not what we specifically have in force. Now, maybe I just don't know how to use it. Maybe it's there somewhere. But when I worked under zoning and planning standards, there wasn't anything there. So it's very hard to know what we actually have, which would be kind of useful to know. I think Jane Mayor, Judith Mayor may know better than the rest of us, but maybe you can tell us how to find them. Thank you, and I appreciate all you're doing. I think it's fantastic. I know how much time it takes. I know how much time we're taking trying to be helpful on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gregory Daggett. I had emailed the staff and the commission quite a bit of information about the infill project in Miami that was probably the case study for an arts and entertainment district. So hopefully you had a chance to look at that. And I would comment on that, that it's, I mean, I lived there from 2002 to 2008 and have gone back every year to kind of like, I go there for Basel, but I go to all these areas to check on, because it's just very interesting to see the progress that they're making. And there was actually two other areas. There was a Midtown that is right next to the Windwood Project and also a Design District. So there's a lot of information from those projects that I think could help, especially in the arts and entertainment district. But if you had read that article, the artists sort of are the ones that kind of brought it back from a very dangerous place and not very desirable. And, you know, it didn't end up very well for them and the galleries. The entertainment part was too successful, and it caused a lot of problems. Finally, when the residents that live there were brought into, you know, what their feelings are, of course, they were happy for the progress and the safety, but it also brought in, you know, a lot of traffic, so exhaust from cars, noise, parking issues. When they were asked about the high-rises in their area, they didn't really want them in their area, but if they had to be, they wanted them closer to I-95, which would be, you know, sort of like our 101 or Snow Boulevard, because they didn't want more traffic coming through their areas. And I would point out, you know, we have a law that's Social Justice Initiative and planning, local planning, that's related to that. And I think that's kind of how people that live on these primary streets in Arcata are, if they don't know now, they're going to know in the future, and that's kind of what happened in Windwood. So it's a little bit more complicated than just putting high-rises in different areas. You have to think about all those variables, because it's a living city and how it's going to affect other areas. And I also would point out the arts and entertainment. I was here at the last meeting for the city council, and they spent a lot of time on a permit that was allowing a lot of young people that are pretty passionate about, you know, music that was going to be on N Street. So I was pretty curious about that, because, I mean, you're going for entertainment, arts and entertainment, and sort of how's that going to work as far as the noise level? And it really, I checked it out, there weren't really that many neighbors, but they actually went, I was pretty impressed with the city. They went to all those neighbors and asked for permission. And so, I don't know, what I've seen from Miami, I think there's a lot of work in that area. I don't see how the Beryl District is going to work out if you're having a high density and you're having, you know, outdoor music, because I think there's going to be a conflict there. And with the Windwood Project, they actually sent up a business district that, you know, had outdoor spaces that were away from that housing, and that kind of resolved some of those problems. So I don't think we're looking at all those areas very specifically. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking everybody, planning commission, staff. I know I sometimes come off as complaining, but I value everything you say. I encourage people to speak out more. I learn. I think the community learns when you speak. And I'm not saying this in any way flippantly. I sincerely mean it. Similarly, if I ever come across as, with the attitude of being smarter, that is not my intention. I have lots and lots of time that I'm devoting to this, and that's, my purpose is for information. In that sense, if I can do anything for any of you, please ask. Last week, I made a spreadsheet. Jen asked me for a copy of the Excel spreadsheet. I'm happy to deliver anything like that. All the information on ArcataOne.com comes from ideas that I've had, maps I've looked for. This is a map that I'll be handing out to you that shows the districts with building heights on an aerial view, which I think is easier to read. It's better in color, of course. And in case anyone thinks I'm always serious, I invite you to go to ArcataOne.com to the humor section and look at the rooster. It's a 21 seconds video that I find very funny. More to the point now, when I look at maps and diagrams in the draft plan, I see things which could be improved. As an example, the cars in the streetscape are clearly too small. I took the trouble of getting some box trucks and pickup trucks and superimposing them on the streetscape to see what that would look like. How small are they? Well, they're smaller than a Prius. They're the size of a subcompact car. They're the size of a Honda Fit. So it gives a distorted view of the actual streetscape. I want to point out that we're eight and a half months into this process. It was originally intended to be a nine, excuse me, a 13-month process for adoption. We're now looking at 16 months, more than halfway through. We still don't have the information needed to make decisions. You're evaluating building height. You don't have the 3D modeling. We don't have the results from the public, from the January open house. In addition to this, there are dependencies in the decision-making process. I don't think it's going to work to have all the information supplied at the end for decisions. Example, as Jim Becker said, is the Transportation Safety Committee spoke out strongly for the L Street pathway. If L Street is a pathway instead of the Cuplet Street as was proposed, it changes the building heights of all the districts alongside L Street. It changes the form-based code of all the parcels along L Street. These are dependencies that aren't really addressed in the current process. There's a group of items which I consider to be management-level decisions that have huge dependencies that affect all your decisions and all of your discussions. I'm not saying it's easy to make these decisions, but the quicker these decisions can be made, the better you can do your job. And then I have a handout here, which, as I said, that you can, probably can't see it from where you are, but there's a white line in the center that is the proposed, or what I hope to be the L Street pathway. And in the current building heights, it has eight-story, seven-story buildings alongside it. Clearly, you wouldn't do that if that becomes a linear park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred.
My name's Joanne McGary, and I came to the last meeting and had to leave early because I did go up to the chamber mixer, and I did have a casual conversation over a glass of wine with some people who happened to work for the university and shared with them my concerns about the division that seems to sort of exist up the hill and down here in town. I was reminded of the movie Breaking Away. I don't know if any of you ever saw it or remember it, about the townie boys in the bike race with some of the university kids in Indiana, a long time ago movie. But what Commissioner Mr. Davies said in the beginning, I applaud and appreciate and acknowledge. And again, I just think with how we are planning the future in our community, in our CADA, people can talk about details and height, size of buildings and this and that, but what really concerns me is sometimes the lack of a very holistic vision of what we're talking about, of a livable community in the future. And I am, and I identify as, a lifelong tenant and will probably remain so, have no ambition or desire necessarily to be a homeowner. And I do know that many in this community do want to move in that direction from being a tenant to a homeowner. But I just want people to recognize that we, all of us want to live safe, sane, and affordably together reasonably in our community. And so when we look at design features, when we look at plans, when we look at heights, when we look at open space and transportation modes and routes and things like that, you know, think of everybody from those who live here now to those who aren't here now but grew up here and might be coming home from college, as I mentioned last week, and also those who have yet to come. What type of community in a seventh-generation type of way of looking at it when we plan? What do we want? And I just want us to hopefully think about that in every decision we make. What do we want for the future, for the people of the future, to make it a livable and thrivable place? So thank you for allowing this opportunity for the public to speak, whether we've lived here for a long time or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public, is anybody on Zoom?
No, there's no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Oh, there are no hands raised. Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to the consent calendar. The only item we have is our minutes from July 26. Does anyone need to pull that item, or can I get a motion to approve the minutes from July 26?
I think we just had a couple of changes. It said on, put me as Chair White, so that needs to be fixed.
So with that correction, just that one correction?
Yeah.
So can you make a motion to approve it with that correction?
I'm sorry, that was correct.
Yeah, can you speak it into the mic a little bit more clearly?
I'm sorry, I think I got it, but.
So business item on elect chair and vice chair. It says it was seconded by Chair White.
Okay, great. I can fix it.
Yes. So I will make a motion to accept the minutes with the change of Chair White to Commissioner White.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 No one opposed? Okay, motion carries. Oops. We're going to move on to our first public hearing, and I got my little yellow card, which means I have to recuse myself because I own property too close to this. So I'm going to go in the back room and.
Are we not, do you want to change the order a little bit and start off with the brewery?
That's okay. I'll just have Scott take over, and I'll just go in the back room.
And then we'll do the brewery later?
No, we're going to do the brewery now.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Our first public hearing item is to consider a use permit and coastal development permit for Finn Doing Business as Pale Moon Brewing Company located at 600 F Street. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners and fellow community members. Tonight before you is a use permit and coastal development permit to establish a small manufacturing brewing company in an existing commercial space. So like you said, it's located at 600 F Street, Suite 7. It's in the Union Town Shopping Center. The staff is recommending the planning commission approve the use permit and coastal development permit by adopting the Class 1 Section 15 301 existing facilities California Environmental Quality Act exemption, and then adopting the action of the planning commission, which is found as Attachment A of your staff report. Exhibit 1 would be the findings of approval. Conditions of approval are part of Exhibit 2. And the description and the findings being able to made for this project. As I mentioned, it's, this is the Union Town Shopping Center, and there's several parcels there that are owned by different property owners. The section back here, mainly access to off of 4th Street here, I mean, 5th Street here. There's a large parking lot here, but this is a former laundry, coin-operated laundromat that has been vacant for several years. Safeway is here. CVS is here. Arcata Pet is here. There is a outdoor courtyard area pathway that goes along this section right here. And the Pale Moon Brewing Company is a small beer manufacturer. That's a special license type by the California Alcoholic and Beverage Control that licenses these facilities. It does allow a level of barrels of beer to be brewed on an annual basis, and it does allow onsite tasting of that. So there will be no other alcoholic beverages served at this facility other than what is brewed in this facility itself. They will produce kegs of beer that could be transported off-site to different restaurants, or if somebody was going to have a wedding or something like that, they wanted to have a special event, they could purchase those kegs. The project does include on-sale indoor and outdoor sales seating areas for that brewery itself. It's about 1,700 square feet. Its ideal location, here's actually some of the frontages. You can see the courtyard area in front of Safeway and then the pet supply. It's kind of, there is the restaurant in this corner here. There are many mixed uses of commercial types and services in this area. And again, this is a vacant site. It was a former laundromat, and the applicant has indicated it was really an ideal site, you know, because they had a lot of the infrastructure in place, both the plumbing and the wastewater was very conducive to the small beer manufacturing production. On this, kind of the south side, this would be as you would be looking out towards Highway 101 and the east. This is the parking lot. And then in the green area here, currently would be accessible parking, which will have to be restriped, but there would be an outdoor patio area here as well. This is kind of view of the interior of it. We consider this, it's a commercial zoning district, and oftentimes you'll find that beer manufacturers are located in industrial areas. But because of the small size and the volume and some of the technology that beer producers are able to do now, they have nano brewing companies that are, again, a lower number of volume of beer being produced, and then the small beer manufacturers, such as the application before you this evening. And so it does kind of take a small area of that. In a larger area, it would be the sales area. Brewing will mostly occur, the actual stuff that this, the magic that the brewmeister does will occur off hours mainly, when the general public is not inside the building itself. And they do, you know, they have hours of operation going only up until as late as 9:00 on most days. So it's kind of a use, even though Safeway and CVS operate until 24 hours a day, seven days a week. A lot of the other businesses don't stay up that late, and so it would be really conducive to some of the similar uses and activities in that area. The findings of approval are found in Attachment A, Exhibit 1. There is the adoption of the environmental findings of categorical exemption that is provided in that section for existing facilities. We don't find anything that this project would not allow us to adopt that CQ finding, that categorical exemption, so we recommend the planning commission consider that. A use permit is required in both the City Arcata Land Use Code and the Coastal Land Use and Development Guide. It does require, because of the use permit, does require the coastal development permit as well. The findings of approval does include findings for the land use code and the local coastal program as well. Again, our staff recommends that you approve this use permit and coastal development permit, adopt the environmental exemption, and then the action for the findings of approvals. I do know that the applicant is here and would be happy to answer any questions if I'm not able to do that for you. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for staff before we open up to public comment? Judith?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks very much for the staff report and for the proposal. It's really interesting. There were a couple of things that I was wondering about, partly from the application and partly from somewhat similar models elsewhere in town. The application indicated that no food would be served on the premises, and yet the pictures include pictures of plates on the tables. Are you envisioning a food truck out in the parking lot in the back, or is that just sort of an oversight?
I discussed this with the applicant, and he'd be, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer if I incorrectly answer. I kind of had that question too with the vent hood there. No food is going to be served at this premise. They don't have any interest, their interest is brewing beer and selling beer and providing that for our community. I'm not sure if a food truck could be operated elsewhere on the property. There are certain requirements from the Health Department that require that, but I'm not aware of the applicant suggesting that there are any food services being provided at this. I think it was artistic rendition by the drafts person to have those plates there.
Okay, well, it was enticing, I have to admit.
Yeah.
So the second question then is, this is something that would typically be an industrial use, and the applicant, and you made a really good argument for how this particular facility is appropriate for that particular activity. But when we adjust our categories like that, it then becomes a precedent for other types of applications later. And I went through, I went through and created a list in my own head of how this type of approval would then become a precedent for other types of otherwise industrial activity. then become a precedent for other types of otherwise industrial activities taking place, you know, in the shopping center. And, you know, some of them were equally enticing and others were kind of scary. So I'm wondering if you've given that any thought yourself in terms of, you know, the implications for, you know, the next application like this that we might be considering?
Yes, we certainly do evaluate those projects when they come in. We did have a pre-application meeting with the different staff members in the different departments. And it's similar to like the wine manufacturing that obtained a use permit that now has a restaurant as well over across from Ace in the downtown area. A very similar process. We went through a use permit in that case as well. And in the Coastal Land Use and Development Guide, which is the equivalent of the Arcata, the citywide land use code, they do have some more... Some criteria as far as allowing commercial sales of products that are produced on-site. And so we kind of use that in conjunction with the accessory use section of the land use code and determine that our recommendation and based on the findings is that the primary use of this property is for the sales of their product that they produce on-site. They do have a small manufacturing area, but that's within the range of being incidental and subordinate compared to the sales area. They're going to make money by selling beer, and that's the main intent of the site there. So I'm sure if the planning commission has other comments, that we'll be able to evaluate that as well.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have a question for staff? I'm going to move to public comment then. Public comment is now open. Would the applicant like to speak first?
And everybody? First and foremost, thank you to the Commissioners for taking the time to review my application. I appreciate that. Thank you to everybody over at the Planning Department. You know, Joe and his team have done a wonderful job. They're thoughtful and responsive in this whole process. Just a brief comment and then I'll address the questions that were asked. My name is Jeff Finn. I'm an Arcata resident. I'm raising kids in Arcata. I've been a professional brewer in Humboldt County for 10-plus years. And I'm at a point where I want to follow that American dream of strike out on your own and be your own boss and chase your dreams. And so that's what I'm trying to do here. I'm trying to raise a successful business, but it can also be a very positive force in the community. It can contribute to the food culture that makes this a nice place to live as well as draws in tourists. It can also use a facility that has actually been vacant for 10 years. And part of why it's vacant is it's a spot that's very specific based on the facilities and what's going on inside. And at this point, it doesn't appear economically feasible for a laundromat to be there. So I thought a brewery would be an appropriate location for that. I searched all over town for a location. I really wanted it to be in Arcata. And that was the only location I could find where I would not have to do heavy utility work and a lot of, you know, plumbing putting in. I mean, the electricity, the water, everything is right there, you know? So not only does that save me money, but it uses resources that are already in place. And then, you know, look into the future. Breweries can be positive forces. There's a lot of charity opportunities. Breweries do a lot of charity and, you know, it gives opportunities to help out like that. In regards to your question, the whole thing with the food plates, you know, there is an opportunity... I will not be producing food. You know, with the brewery license, it's a Type 23 from ABC. And the state of California has actually already approved the application. And so the state of California has no issues. But I'm allowed to have like, you know, bags of chips, prepackaged food. And I'm also allowed to have people bring in food if they so choose. So, you know, if somebody wants to grab an appetizer from the Thai place next door, they could totally do that. In regards to the pictures, it's just standard contractor templates basically for furniture. So, you know, my contractor, Alchemy Construction, it's just sort of their standard, you know, protocol for... Or it's the software they use basically, you know? If you've ever used one of those softwares to design a room or an addition or something like that. And then, you know, briefly to address the notion of it being industrial, you know, there is an industrial component to it, but the scale of the production is so small, it's going to... It's like a very small kitchen when it comes down to it. And basically, when you're making beer, you're making soup and you're feeding it to very specific fungus. So in some ways, you can look at it as a soup restaurant that, you know, the soup gets moldy before I give it away to people. But, you know, I want to be brief tonight because I think Joe did a great job with the project description and everything. And so if you have any further questions, I'm very happy to help answer or alleviate any concerns. And I'm happy to do whatever is necessary to see this project through. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the other members of the public wish to speak to this item? Anybody online?
No, there's not.
Public comment is then now closed. Does commission have any further questions for staff or the applicant?
Just to typo again, on page 14, it says Pal Moon instead of Pale Moon, top under item B. Just under the findings of approval. That's it. I'm super excited to have that building no longer be vacant.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use permit and coastal development permit for Finn DBA Pale Moon Brewing Company at 600 F Street, Suite 7.
I'll second that.
Have a second?
Yep.
You have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 This motion is approved.
We'll come down for some moldy soup soon.
Yeah.
All right. So we are moving on to business items. And our first business item is to review and consider information presented from the responsible growth of Arcata. Do we have a presentation or a staff report?
Yeah, we do. We have a presentation. Scott, I believe. Here he comes. We're going to tee up his PowerPoint, so give us one second.
And Scott, you can just kind of signal me when you want me to cue your next slide. Okay?
Okay. Great. All right. Well, just wanted to thank staff and the chair and the commission for giving us some time to kind of go over our request for a gateway plan advisory committee on your busy agenda. My name is Scott McBane. I'm part of the Responsible Growth Arcata. And we're a diverse group of community members that really care deeply about the city of Arcata like we all do. And we just wanted, again, reaffirm our intent here is to help the city produce a balanced, high-quality gateway plan that we can be proud of in 20 years and beyond. And out of respect for your time and your agenda, we've asked potential supporters not to provide verbal comments of support tonight, just to make this go faster. However, I think many have offered to write some emails of support to you just to kind of speed the process along. So hopefully that'll help you as well. This advisory committee kind of mirrors the tradition of previous city of Arcata task forces, so I kind of use those terms so ominously, that have successfully improved large-scale infrastructure and planning efforts. And so I want to... That's part of the vision here is to do that again here, to build community support towards a better outcome, which is why we're all here. So the objective tonight is to allow you to consider this proposed strategy and solicit Commissioner feedback to improve the value and benefit of this committee. And we hope to take this request to the city council as well. So we'd like to incorporate any constructive feedback that you may have to help make this better. So just a quick roadmap of what I wanted to go through, and I'll try to do my best to keep it under 10 minutes, maybe 11, is we wanted just to kind of give an overview of the problems that we see that we're trying to solve, the objectives of the advisory committee, the strategy to address those problems, a framework for how this could be done as initial suggestions, and then summarize with kind of the benefits of what we see for the advisory committee. So next. So just starting in the upper left-hand corner, I'll go counterclockwise. The... Some of the problems that we see that we're trying to solve here is the content of the plan. We've heard a lot about that. Staff has called them priority divisive issues or something similar. I'll just call them priority issues because I'm trying to get rid of the divisive part. And so we've kind of summarized some of the things that we've heard from the RGA community in the back of your handout that we gave you. And then so there's a wide range of these, including community engagement, limited quantitative data on community input and desires envisioned for the gateway area, feasibility issues and proposed actions and many of the proposed actions in the draft plan. City's time and resources are very cognizant of everyone's really busy and we don't worry about workload for doing both city staff and committees, for doing both the general plan and the gateway planning processes and challenges with grant deadlines and potential loss of funding. Those sorts of issues are also issues that need to be addressed and potential additional funding needs to make this happen. So concerned about that. Next is just the timeline. We want this to happen fast, as fast as we can, because we want to address these problems that we've all been talking about as far as housing and making the community better. But we need to do it, do this plan right. So we need a nice balance of the time to do it right, but also expedited as well and get better community input and trust. And then lastly, recusal uncertainty. This is kind of getting at some of the recusal issues that many of you guys have for the city committees and city council. And with the general plan and the gateway plan being combined under one EIR project. Next. So the objectives of this... Sorry for the animation here, but just do want... That's perfect there. Is the first is just to build more collaborative and participatory community engagement. For months, this has been an ongoing community concern that we've talked to you about. One thing that kind of crystallized for me is like what the disconnect may be is one of the charts in the OPR Chapter 3. And so if you just... I mean, I'm sure most of you are familiar with this, but on the spectrum of public impact and engagement on the decision, on one hand, you have inform, which is like the least amount, and power is the most amount. I kind of feel that we... Our current process has been in the consult phase of just obtaining public input without kind of a cause and effect feedback relationship between that feedback and either recommendations or decisions. It's a little early for decisions, but it just seems like it's going into a black hole and there's not an opportunity other than two minutes of, you know, periods of glory during these meetings to offer meaningful input. And so I think what we'd like to be is in the collaborate part of the spectrum where the city partners with the public in identifying solutions so that we can spend our time trying to help solve the problems instead of coming here every meeting for two minutes. Next. And the net result of this is to build community trust and more community trust and support for the gateway plan. That should be the culmination of this type of process. The next is... The next objective is to address and recommend solutions to those priority issues that have been raised to date. Again, we've kind of listed some in the back. They're just an initial list, but it would be helpful to start going through those. And those are based on our discussions with the community as well as our January 2022 survey on this topic. So you can kind of see some of those. And then finally, provide recommendations for solutions in completing a final gateway plan on an expedited and achievable timeline that contains that is quality, feasibility, innovation, and balance to provide for a healthy community between housing, businesses, employment, all these things that we want. Next. So next is strategy, like how do we do this? So it's kind of a two-part. One is just a recommendation to separate the gateway plan from the general plan 2045 process. And this may have some benefits addressing some of the city council member and committee recusal issues so they can participate fully in general plan 2045. Provides time for... We have elections coming up, so for the newly elected city council to be seated, get them up to speed and participate in the process. And then provides the rest of you time to really focus on the general plan 2045 and let this happen in parallel with number two, where the gateway advisory committee could focus on working on recommendations for the gateway plan. So addressing these issues and providing potential solutions on these priority issues to the gateway plan and providing recommendations on how to finalize it. But again, this advisory committee wouldn't work on the gateway plan itself. That would still be the responsibility of city staff and consultants. But provide recommendations as task force have done in the past. Next. Okay. So this is a hard one. Just to kind of try to put our heads around how this could work is kind of a framework document showing kind of a process diagram with, again, the intent of maximizing the benefits of this towards the gateway plan, but trying to minimize the impacts on schedule costs and city staff time. So that's going to be a hard one to navigate, like the question is, is this going to take more time or less time or how's this going to help? And we need to kind of make sure that we're clear on that. The first kind of core of it is city council would be appointing and make... Forming the gateway advisory committee. But the gateway advisory committee, again, would be advisory and provide recommendations to the city council. So we're proposing a small number of people on the advisory committee to be nimble and to get work done. If we have 20 people advisory committee, there's concern about it's going to take us two months to even schedule a meeting. So there's kind of a balance on size there and just being nimble to get work done. And we envision that people... Those members would be people that are problem-solving, community members that get work done, that are collaborators, that are time-efficient, have the time to do it, are objective and knowledgeable about these priority issues, and want to volunteer their time for the good of a future city of Arcata. So all those ideals that we're trying to achieve. And that the role of this advisory committee would be to provide leadership and management, hopefully to take some of the burden off of city staff, but still to work with city staff to do this, but they would lead and manage the process. And so those needs with city staff would, you know, there'd be administration liaison and facilitation needs there. Next. And then that advisory committee would then kind of manage topic working groups or breakout groups. I call them technical strike teams. I do this a lot in my business where we kind of sub out these groups. And their task would be to address and recommend solutions to these priority issues. So we envision these to be small groups, the topical experts that could dig into an issue and brainstorm potential solutions. And at a minimum, if the solutions can't be found, that they recommend a plan for a plan on how to solve those. So we may not be able to solve sea level rise, but at least we'll identify a recommendation for a plan to address how we do that. So it's not just vague. And do that in a transparent way and that'll help break... Bring out trust. Next. So again, the advisory committee would get a lot of this work done, but still have routine progress reports and communication with the planning commission and committees, ideally during normal meetings so that we're not adding too many new meetings. But there may still likely need to be some special meetings at key points to discuss details as well. And that this... These advisory committee would also work closely with city staff and consultants as needed, but again, trying not to burden them with too many additional tasks. And then lastly, this is kind of the big thing as mentioned a couple slides ago. The ideal here is for collaborative community engagement in this process to encourage that in the post-COVID pandemic time now. And we see kind of three things here, components of it. One is to conduct a rapid survey of the community to obtain quantitative information and data on community desires on the gateway area, specifically vision that Joanne talked about earlier and the priority issues. The second piece of that would be through these topic working groups where the community topic experts could participate in these working groups in a transparent way and help brainstorm these solutions to come up with the better... Some better ideas. The way I kind of look at this is 90% of it may be garbage, but the 10% that comes out of that process is typically golden. So that's one of the... Again, the trade-offs, but there's some really good ideas that can come out of that. And then two-way public engagement workshops that are convened by the advisory committee. So again, trying to... And I'll show this in a subsequent slide. Next. Okay. I'm not going to go through all these things, but this is just kind of a list of some of the potential topics that will need to be addressed. Again, this is summarized in a little bit more detail on the last page. And it's not a list of the working groups. So again, the working group should hopefully be a smaller number because they could cover multiple topics, but it's just kind of a range of the topics that could and should be addressed by the advisory committees. be addressed by the advisory committees. So some of this, you know, we've heard that some of the stuff, well, we'll deal with this in the EIR, it'll take care of that. But some of these things, I think that we do need to look at earlier, particularly like physical benefit, fiscal benefits, impacts, and some other issues like L Street that Fred mentioned earlier is like, if there's an issue like that that comes up and the EIR kicks it back, it's like, okay, now we have to kind of, it changes the whole framework of it. So I think that there's some things that we kind of need to look at earlier. And again, fiscal is one of those. Next. Yeah, again, just to, yeah, go ahead. Being redundant there. So potential steps and timeline on this. Again, we're trying to do this as fast as we can, but again, provide enough time. The components of this would be ideally to assemble the advisory committee and kickoff meeting. September may be a little bit optimistic, but again, it just kind of shows that we're trying to get this done fast as we can. And then compile and supplement community input to date. And so staff has done a lot of work with engagement report. There's still a lot of material in there that's still under development. A lot of it can't be quantified, but I think there's still some quantification that can be done. But again, I think that there's a real need to have a more quantitative survey of specifics of the gateway area that needs to be done. We did one in 2022, but it wasn't a scientific survey. So we'd like to kind of revisit that and make sure that everybody's trusts the results and is comfortable with it. And so we have a draft scope of work and budget from a qualified consultant to do this. So ideally, this would be something the advisory committee could implement early in the process. And then it would be a four to six month process of kind of working through the issues through the, the topic working groups and the advisory committee. And this is where probably a lot of the heavy lifting would occur and coordination with, with you and other committees as need be. And then from that, kind of pull it all together and conduct public engagement workshops to go through this with people and get any kind of feedback. And then from that feedback, work with planning commission, city council and city staff based on those, probably do a study session to go over draft recommendations, prepare draft recommendations report, and then ideally produce a final recommendations report by July 2023. And that would be kind of the kickoff of, for city staff and consultant team to start the finalization process for the gateway plan. So yes, it takes a little bit more time, but the process is already being delayed. So I think we can build this in without too much more delay is our hope. Next. And then lastly, I've kind of talked about most of these things, just a summary of the anticipated benefits. But again, we need to go through there, through these because there are trade-offs, downsides to this, some of these things as well. But again, it should be able to help us, the city council and commission focus on general plan 2045 while the advisory committee works on the, in parallel on the gateway plan. Gives us time to recover from the post-COVID information gathering compilation to get better information on desires of the gateway area from the community. It'll improve trust and buy-in and more support from the community. So we can spend our time trying to help on these, solve these problems instead of coming here in this fashion. Help us address some of these feasibility issues that have been tripping us up to improve implementability of the gateway plan. We don't want to develop something that we can't implement with sea level rise and some of these other issues that have come up. So it gives us a chance to try to figure out some of these issues a little bit more in a way that the public can understand and support. I'm hoping that it builds city staff and consultant capacity, although hopefully Jen isn't looking too sternly at me with this one, but, but also bring in new innovative solutions that are just from some really smart and innovative people that we have in this community that we're lucky to have here and bring them into the process. And hopefully it'll help resolve some of the recusal issues for the general plan 2045 so we can get going on that. And I think another important one we haven't talked about is that we have more of these probably coming as part of the targeted rezone areas. And so if we can do this process right and be informed, it may really facilitate, we may see some of the benefits in our, in our time commitment on future projects that come up if we can kind of figure out how to do this one right. This is the first time we've done this. So I think it's a good time to do an advisory committee because it is the first time and try to get this right. Do you have one last one? So kind of the end, it's really just for if you have any questions or comments, but again, kind of our objective here is to get feedback from you to make this better and make it more usable and that we can take that feedback and hopefully refine this for this city council to improve the benefits and value of this request. So I'm open for questions. And if there's any questions on previous task force, I have a phone or friend hopefully right here that was on the Plaza improvement task force, which I was not on.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. And then I think, dude, everybody has questions.
Yeah, I have questions.
So actually, how I started my career was the homeless task force about 20 years ago. I mean, there's been task force and there's been, right, I just finished up the RIP task force. So that's how we get a lot of good stuff done here. So I kind of believe in it. But my question is, I have a bunch of questions. So how, how are you going to vet your members? How, how are you going to make sure your members don't have, they're on here because they have an agenda or they're going to benefit financially or they work for a company that will benefit financially? You have to vet your members. How, how are you going to handle that?
Well, I'm not going to handle it because that's not my job. I mean, it's ultimately city council's job to make the appointments. But I think that what we've, what I verbally said at least are some criteria that I think are important for those members to avoid some of those pitfalls. So to me, you know, it's the problem solving collaborative, you know, they're here not to, to do something for the community, not just for one's interest group. And that means give and take. And so that's kind of where, when I do these things on large river restoration projects, it's really important to have that, to make progress on these sorts of things. You have to come to the table, you know, honestly to try to solve problems. And that's what would be needed. But, so we just need to work, I mean, I don't know, other than ideally, the city council would appoint somebody or a little subgroup that can work on this issue because ultimately it would be their responsibility and authority to do that.
Okay, so I guess I must have missed that part. So they would be appointed by the city council. Okay, so that's good. And then.
I'll try to keep my responses shorter too.
No, no.
So you're trusting the city council then?
They'll have to appoint.
To make good appointments.
Yeah, they'll have to appoint and figure out how to screen people. And then are we talk, are you talking about, will there be liaison from the council or from us or from staff that will attend these meetings as liaisons? So did you, okay, you went over that. Okay, I'm going to let other people ask their questions.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
I'm a little confused about the relationship between this letter attachment B from Responsible Growth Arcata outlining the task force and that this neutral body would somehow be vetted through the city council. And my confusion starts like on page two here where there's very specific recommendations like that the gateway area plan become a gateway specific plan that we limit to four stories, no longer taller than 45 feet. And, you know, so there's some real angle already exposed here. Like your cards have been tipped heavily. If, if, if you, if Responsible Growth Arcata is crafting this in any way, I feel like we're heading toward the train wreck because some of these things that you've outlined are, are totally antithetical to what city staff has put for us to sort through and, you know, to what the gateway area plan presently is drafted as being proposed. If, if, you know, this group that developed, and it sounds really great in, in a whole bunch of community ways and developing community input and trust and everything else, I like so much about it. But if there's already a slant from the day one meeting that is pretty much directly opposed to, for example, the height limit or some, some of these things, then how do we get through that? That feels like a stacked deck against what has been proposed.
Yeah, I think the short answer is that we wouldn't be like running this process. I mean, we're asking city council to, to form another group. That doesn't mean that, that if they come up with something that's different than what some of our members or our group would like to see. I mean, those are just things that we would like to see. So, I mean, but that's part of the process of trying to figure that stuff out. So, yeah, it's not, I mean, we wouldn't be in charge of that.
I guess, quite honestly, maybe your group wouldn't even be on this. I mean, if only seven to nine people, I don't know, maybe none of you would be on it. Or maybe just one.
Yeah, we've never talked about that. I mean, I don't, to me, I actually don't want to be on it. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's an independent issue to me.
Yeah, okay.
So I think to me, the, the thing is objectivity and independence. So that's really important for the advisory committee.
And I appreciate that, that the, that the letter is in the same packet with this presentation of creating this super neutral committee, but then there's some really strong statements in here about what should and shouldn't be about the gateway plan. And that makes me, it forces the question.
Yep. No, and I think every, there's a lot of other groups that have similar, strong positions on that. And some of it, you know, we'll just need to work through, but that's part of the process.
Thank you.
I'll open this up in, in a bit. We're going to ask questions first. Any, do you have any other questions for Scott?
Yes. Thank you for an organized presentation. I appreciate that. I have a few questions. One of the questions I have is that in the problems to solve section, you identify city time and resources as a problem. And under the frameworks area, you suggest that the GPAC would be an additional group that both the city and consultants would have to respond to and with. And I'm curious, how does that not increase the workload for the city and simultaneously slow down the process of approving a plan to address a housing crisis that we're in right now?
Yeah, I think that the main way of doing that is that addressing those priority issues would be managed and led by the advisory committee. And while it wouldn't be excluding city staff or the committees, but they would be doing a lot of the legwork to do that. So like, you know, organizing the topics for the, the topical work groups, setting up dates. Again, there's need to be coordination with, with staff on that, but a lot of that work, developing agendas, that work would be done by the advisory committee so that staff wouldn't have to be taking the lead on that. But, you know, I don't work, I mean, I don't work with, sorry. We need to work through those things to make sure that, that it wasn't an additional burden. But the intent is to have more people roll up their sleeves to help address these issues from the community.
I understand. It's, it's a little bit difficult for me to see how adding another committee doesn't create more work for city staff, but I'll, I'll move on. I have some other questions.
Well, I think just the main thing is that they're actually doing work and not just keeping a seat warm. So that they're, that, as I kind of mentioned in, in the earlier part of this, is that, you know, their job is to manage this, to lead this, to direct these topical work groups, to address these issues and try to resolve them. So, I mean, to me, that's a heavy lift to get a good quality gateway plan finished. And if we don't have time to do that kind of a process, we're going to get something that people aren't all that happy about, like is kind of where we're at right now. So that's, that's the main core of what we're requesting.
Thank you. I'm also curious, I know that there are any number of committees already in the city of Arcata, Forest, Wetlands, Economic Development, et cetera, all involving city volunteers, all of whom have spent time interacting with city staff already, sometimes on multiple occasions. And I'm curious, why do you feel that those individual groups reviewing the gateway plan are not able to bring the same process to bear that the committee you're proposing does? And as a second part of that, how is this not going to be redundant to efforts that have already been made by all these citizens of Arcata in all of these already existing committees?
Right. So I think an example, an example may be best for your first one. So, so like to say wetlands and creeks. I mean, that's kind of my technical specialty. I'm not a advisory committee specialist. And, but with wetlands and creeks, you know, they're very much, they're more lenient. You get more than two minutes to provide your, your input. So that's been nice. But some of the things that I would like to be able to brainstorm as a stream scientist and a restoration practitioner is, there are so many things that we could do with say a Jolly Giant Creek restoration project that I've mentioned to them. And they're like, oh yeah, it sounds like a great idea, but there's just not like time to like flush that out, particularly in two minutes. But actually just to frame out what that means and how we can move forward with that and then integrate it into a gateway plan as opposed to just having one line item that says, you know, restore Jolly Giant Creek or do something better. So we can actually provide some specifics there. So me as a practitioner, I have to barge into these meetings with two minutes of speaking time or three minutes. They give you more. But it's not like a meaningful, like let's roll up our sleeves and try to figure out how to do this and integrate it seamlessly into the gateway plan. So that may be a good example. Another really good one, I'll try not to be too long-winded about this, is that I served on the Congressman Huffman's ad hoc committee for the Eel Russian River issue on resolving Potter Valley project. And so that's a very complex project with people on very different sides of the, of the management issues there. And he's trying to solve or avoid a civil war between two watersheds in his district. So there was a big policy group, but then to address specific technical issues, we formed ad hoc working groups. And we did a water supply subcommittee that there was like five of us that had representatives from different parties. And we sat down and actually did scoping and water operations modeling to look at different alternatives to solve a very complex water operations and water supply problem. We brought it back to this diverse group and they, they're just like, yeah, right on. This is awesome what you guys did. We trust the results because it was done in an objective and transparent way. So I see that kind of success in the work that I do. And that's part of the reason that you see that here is because I see success doing it that way. And we get some really great creative minds to solve these problems and people trust the results at the end. Second question was, sorry.
I think that answers, I think that answers the bulk of that, of that question. I, I think my last question is one of the, some of the methodology and outreach that you proposed involves, excuse me, surveys, taking community input, doing outreach that, all of which sounds to me like things that the city of Arcata has already done regarding the gateway area project. So I'm wondering if it's, that you feel that previous surveys or outreach has been flawed in some way, or you feel that you're going to bring a different approach to doing things that the city's already tackled in regards to the gateway area project?
Now, there's some great quantitative information. I always forget, that's the SERP. What is that? Strategic Infill Something Plan or Program?
Redevelopment Program.
Program. So there's some great quantitative work done there. When, and so, and then there's a broader online vision survey that was done for the greater city that added, asked, you know, pretty broad questions. But the community workshop that was done in January was the first time that we started getting specific about the gateway area. And, and so I went to that and I looked at it and it's like, well, this is great for visualization, but the method that was used to, to document input wasn't done in a way that could be quanti- quantified. So like, you know, there's red and green dots and lots of written on sticky notes. And so I feel for you guys that had to try to make sense of that because it's hard to do it that way. So you can try to verbally write it through. So in response to that, just so we get some quantitative data, we did our own, you know, bias survey that was focused on these kind of specific issues in the gateway area, like building heights and parks and, you know, the positives and the negatives that, that could come with the gateway plan. But of course, it wasn't done in a statistic, in a scientific way because it was done at, you know, farmer's market and just online. So it's not something that probably you guys will trust or some other groups would trust. And so that's why we think that it's important to do an, an objective, independent survey that's, that's quantitative, like, you know, do 90% of people don't want anything over four stories or do 50%. And that would make a big difference on, on your impression of what the community do 50%? And that would make a big difference on, on your impression of what the community wants, if you had that kind of information, instead of trying to decipher a picture of red and yellow green dots, or red and green dots with handwriting on it. I mean, it's just not fair to you guys as far as being informed. So that's the purpose of it.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I had a couple comments or questions. So what I hear from the community is that they feel this is staff-led, not necessarily community-led. And I hear what Scott is saying is, this seems redundant. We've already done the work. The staff has done, you know, community outreach. And a case in point that comes to my mind is the meeting in the box to the Latinx community, where there were five people present. It's not a representative sample. But to even add to that, only one person in that five was actually Latinx and Spanish-speaking. So I feel like, when I went to Cal Poly Humboldt, where I received my master's in sociology, we did something called participatory action research. And some of you might have been following what we've been doing in Valley West, which is a participatory budget process. This disenfranchised community who felt voiceless, it has, it's an incredible turnaround. It has deepened democracy. Voices are feeling heard. And some people are talking about, well, this is just going to slow down the process. I think rather than slowing it down, it's actually going to speed it up. Because we're not going to get logjammed at the end. And we're going to have something crafted that represents all of the community and not just some. And I, I'm super excited about the prospect of doing this. I do trust that our city council can put together a stakeholder, uh, community group that are diverse and have various, that they will have more, help me, access to the community, right? And, and also, uh, different, you know, from different trades and from different places in the community. So you're not like this tunnel vision or being siloed. I just really hope we do this. This is going to affect Arcata forever. And if we do not include all of the voices, then we're going to get logjammed. And we do need housing, and we need it now. But if we don't do the process correctly, and we don't have all the voices heard, we're not going to have housing anytime in the near future. And I think this is the way to move forward. This is the way to include all of the voices. I really like the idea of bringing in some quantitative and qualitative, uh, survey statistics. We have an incredible resource at Cal Poly Humboldt. We ought to get over there and talk to the government planning over where Judith teaches. We have people over in the sociology department. We can have these worker bees. They can, you know, hopefully get employed later on. But, yeah, we have a wealth of incredible talent there that we're not tapping into. It doesn't have to cost a huge amount of money. And, yeah, that's all I say. I'm kind of being redundant myself. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your providing us with this proposal in person and talking it through rather, rather than just in the document form. That makes a very big difference. A couple of questions came up with regard to the form that you would envision a gateway plan coming in. And, and I don't want to get caught in the area plan versus specific plan question. I, I have a feeling the city council's going to, you know, give the go-ahead on, on whatever they do. But in terms of breaking the gateway part, plan apart from the general plan, it does seem like there's some advantages in freeing the planning commission up in the very near future, the coming few months, to really focus on the general plan update. But then, of course, the gateway plan would need to be consistent with that. How would you see that interaction going in, in terms of helping to make sure that we're not coming up with divergent visions for a very large part of downtown Arcata? And, and the beep, the beep, the beeping is great, but it's, I, I think we're all jangled enough now. Yeah.
Well, and one option is that at least one of the advisory committee members can just be assigned to track the general plan update process through the planning commission and committees. So that, that there's a constant line of communications that, that they don't get, you know, diverge in the direction that they're heading. That could be an option.
Okay. Another question is, until a few weeks ago, we, we were under the impression that the, the planning commission would basically being, providing direct input and recommendations to the city council, and that the public would make recommendations to the planning commission with regard to the gateway. A few weeks ago, city staff indicated very clearly that they're in effect sidelining the planning commission in terms of those recommendations, and really seeing what we would contribute as one among many city committees making recommendations to the city council. Your proposal does exactly the same thing. And so I'm, I'm wondering what your vision is for the role of this commission, the city of Arcata Planning Commission, in that process?
Yeah, it wasn't intended to, to be a junior member. So, you know, in the, I don't know, I guess you can go back to the, the presentation. But, so I think it just kind of comes down to how you interpret like, the arrows process here. So, so one of my earlier drafts of this had specific arrows that went from the planning commission to the city council. But then there was like 153 arrows on there, and it was just a mess so you couldn't see it. So I think that recommendations from the planning commission and the committees could still go to city council, so that that process is still retained. But that there would just be, you know, coordination between the advisory committee and the planning commission. So, I don't know, we'd just, we'd need to work those sorts of things out.
Okay. But, but is it a misinterpretation to say that, that your proposal envisions providing recommendations directly to the city council?
Right.
Rather than to the planning commission?
Right. Yes. The answer is yes. But if there's a better way of doing it, I mean, that's not my expertise. So I apologize if there's a better way. But I think that the reason that we did that is just because in the past advisory committees have been at the, I guess, at the direction of city councils to appoint them. So we kind of emphasize and prioritize that.
Okay. And, and one, one last question. What, one of, one of the interesting things in your proposal that I found was, in, if the gateway plan were to be broken apart from the general plan update, it does seem that your vision of the gateway planning process could eventually be incorporated into the general plan as an element, just as staff has already proposed. And the nightmare I keep hearing from staff about doing something like that would be then we would double our costs of complying with SEQA, there'd have to be two EIRs, we'd miss deadlines. But in the process that you would envision, is this something where conceivably the, the, the separate gateway plan, whether it's an element or, or some other form, could actually tear off of the EIR done for the general plan? Or are you actually envisioning a process that would in fact require an entirely separate SEQA process?
No, we didn't go that far to be specific on that. I think that's something that we just need to figure out. And I'm not a SEQA expert, but, sorry. So that would, that's, there's a, there's a number of those, those sorts of things that I kind of mentioned in passing. And certainly the, the cost, and the timing and staff time are, are other ones. But that's another one.
Okay. Thanks very much.
We haven't heard from two. Kristen, do you have anything to add?
I feel a lot of my questions have already been answered. I have great fellow commissioners that ask great questions that I was going to prompt, but it seems like I'm good to go.
Uh, no, I don't really have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to open this to public hearing, and, public comment, I should say. And you're going to have three minutes.
Let me try to address some of those questions. We brought up the issue of should a planning commissioner be on the committee, or be staffed at the committee, or be in charge of the committee? And we didn't feel we should make that decision. There was no interest in bypassing the planning commission. Because we feel that it's very important that the traditional role of the planning commission be maintained, that it gives its own separate recommendations to council. Now, my experience, and I, this is going to sound terrible. I was on the EDC for 12 years. I got off because it's like, we don't have people on it that are doing the work. Jen did this fabulous format, template, laying out each of the provisions that they could have responded to. One person had one comment, two other people, and it was a very strong comment, but two other people had a couple of comments. Nobody had done the work to go through that. Jen had to sit down and try to turn the comments that they had into recommendations. They couldn't even do that. And I'm sorry, I'm very frustrated. And I expressed my frustration to Jen. That is not what we're envisioning. We're envisioning, I mean, those of us who are working on this, and I'm not even on IGA, I just got kind of pulled in because I was worried about what was happening and the lack, we have lots of opinion data, we have lots of comments, no data. We have lots of opinions, comments at the kazoo from the visioning process. But that doesn't tell you, they aren't directly to the specific issues of how tall buildings do we want, what setbacks do we want, what density do we want? And, and you look at what's happening with HSU, and they're already making provision, we're, we're talking about making this available for students. Well, they're already making available housing on their own right between what they already had planned. They just bought Creekside. I don't know what they're going to do with that. But they are taking care of their own needs for the next few years. We don't have to be in such a bloody rush to make student housing for them. They're doing it themselves. They have a timeline, and they have it, and I'm going to run out of time. I could answer more of your questions if you want to give me more time. But the Plaza Improvement Task Force was a working group. We came up with a survey with the help of, and it was specific, all right? And it had topical categories, and we had specific issues on each one. We conducted a survey online, and then we also, each of us took a subgroup, a representative group, I took seniors. So I went to the community centers, and I passed it out. And I got, I hit Valentine's Day. I got 40 people to, you know, do it on the spot. But we got real data. And, and suggestions and, and opinions from that group. And one of the members took HSU students. Another member took, I think, a Spanish community. But the point is, we got, we got creative data, and we got ideas. And then we were able to take that and, and evaluate that. We worked, okay? We did work. That's what we want. And that's what we want. City council has the ability to evaluate whether it's serious or not. Nobody who's not serious should, should even consider doing it, you know? I got to quit. But if, if I can help you with further information, I'd be happy to do so. The Plaza Improvement Task Force and other task force have been extremely valuable and, and working committees. And, and I, sorry about all the things I said about the EDC.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you. Anyone else? Fred?
Thank you. I'm Fred Wise. I am not a member of Responsible Growth Arcata. I have known Scott since February or so. I'd like to speak to some of the commissioner's comments because what I know about this is from the packet, and I've talked to Scott. Commissioner Tagney, you mentioned attachment B. I hope I'm not paraphrasing too much, but it's not appropriate. I completely agree. I'll point out that it's dated March 31st. So it's quite, quite a while ago. It states the views of, of the group. I think it's, shouldn't have been included in the packet, in my opinion, or, or as a separate letter. It's not connected, or from my point of view, or the way I say it, it's not connected with the actual presentation. Commissioner Davies, I thought you had some very astute comments also about it possibly making more work or more redundant. I'll bring up that the committees are doing a good job, but such, we, we heard last week from Eric Lowdenberger from the Fire Protection, there, there are big questions that aren't really being addressed that in theory, a topic working group like this could actually address, research, make a recommendation to you, to the commission. And another one is, is wastewater treatment questions, which keep coming up, but there's not a resolution. But in theory, there could be some experts on these topic working groups that would actually say, this is what we recommend. And that then would, then we're done with it. You know, we have a, I mean, where you can accept it or not accept it, but at least it's something that you can go with. Commissioner Mayer, you spoke about, is this is bypassing the commission? My reading of it is that this is completely in addition to, not bypassing the commission one little bit. And as Scott pointed out, there's lots of arrows missing. The, I spoke a few months ago about my concern that we're going to get through this process in six or eight months. There'll be all the recommendations from the committees. It'll all be compiled into report. And this committee will want this, this committee will want this, and they'll not be cohesive, and the council will not know what to do. I'm not saying this will solve that, but I think it'll help with any disagreement. It'll provide more cohesive results that allow you to evaluate what's, what's, what the input is, what the information is. Again, I'm not connected with Scott. I support what he's doing. I don't agree with everything. I'm not a signatory on this for a variety of reasons. And that's it. I hope you consider what he says. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just bring up one aspect of checklist for infill projects that, it seems to be consensus, the number one thing you would do there is send out a mass mailing to everyone in the city so they're aware of what's going on. So my question, was that ever done? And if it hasn't, it should be done now. Because obviously, there's a problem with, I participated with a scoping with David, and he was so disappointed with the lack of participation. I mean, I mean, look at, there's not even that many people here. So obviously, there's a problem. Either people don't care, or the message hasn't got out. So something needs to be done about that. Because the people are the ones that you need to hear from. What, what, I don't know what their response is, but you need to reach out there. And I'd also address the, the issue that we brought up about the eight stories high. The staff is a very hardworking body, and I wouldn't want to be in their shoes with something this, this large of a, a project. But I would like to note that some of these things are, I mean, eight stories, and I brought this up, that it was a wetland area, then it was a tsunami zone. This is like some, you need an expert to answer that question. So you seem to be like, I don't know, you're feeling like you want a certain number of, of stories. But it's, that's not the question. You should be asking, what do the professionals say that are actually, you know, the expert to comment on these things and not, and not make a mistake? And I would point out, here we go with Miami again, but that's another city that's been in the news with the collapse of a, a building that was built in the 1980s that over 100 people died. And the city is on the hook because they were had to do inspections. They, at the last minute, they added two extra floors. It's kind of like familiar here where we might give somebody two more floors. So where is the, the study that, that this is all, all safe? And I'll have to say, the New York Times, maybe I need to send you a link on this. They did, they hired experts to find out why that building collapsed. And there's extensive studies there that they did. And the last category was, who's on the hook for that? It's, and you know who's on the hook for that? for that? Partial city, it's partial, the building owners, because they didn't want to do the maintenance at 20, 30 years increments. You're not even thinking about that, that people don't want to, you know, put in the bucks to keep their building safe. And even the builder, that was Surfside, Miami Beach is next door, the building, the high rise they built there, and I went there in December and saw it with my own eyes, that was like a block away. Well, you know, those guys are going to be on the hook too for hundreds of thousands of dollars, because they dug near it, and they're saying that that had an influence. So you need to, by looking at all these issues. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I attended, but was not on the Plaza Improvement Task Force. But it was a very effective group of working people on that task force to talk about how to improve the plaza. And so, community involvement and community engagement, as previous people have spoken, you know, we're a small group here, I don't know how many are watching on Zoom or YouTube or whatever, but getting more of the community involved is really important. And I think a task force or a working group that is being proposed is really important because, as Commissioner White also mentioned in Valley West, the experience, it changes the community, and it really is a great dynamic. The one concern I have with like the Plaza Improvement Task Force is that a little bit has been done, but a lot of what was proposed and suggested is, you know, you can use COVID as an excuse perhaps, but it's taken a long time, and still, a lot of stuff hasn't been implemented as far as I can see and tell. So we want to make sure that it's a productive group that actually makes recommendations and things actually get done without just having another group to get more specific and do working things on the gateway plan. So I am all in favor of a very diverse working group to look at the gateway plan, and I just hope more and more people in this community get involved. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We do have two participants online. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Colin Fisk. I'm with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. CRTP has participated in a lot of public planning processes over the years, and I've personally engaged in a lot more, both in this region and other parts of the country. I'm very familiar with the workings of both permanent committees and commissions like this one, along with the kind of ad hoc task force that's being requested. In fact, CRTP was actually the organization that suggested the creation of the Plaza Improvement Task Force, which has been so often cited, and we attended almost every of those meetings. An ad hoc committee or task force is useful when a plan or project requires significant fact finding or review beyond what standing committees, commissions, staff, and elected bodies are able or willing to provide. But for the gateway plan, that's just not the case. This planning commission, along with almost every other city of Arcata Standing Committee, has prioritized extensive review of the plan, held dozens and dozens of regular and special meetings focused on the subject. Staff have held additional special meetings and events. And really, there's no additional meaningful fact finding or public review that I can envision, which an ad hoc committee would add to the process. It would just basically reduplicate what has already occurred and continues to occur at this very meeting. And it would have to start all over from the beginning, essentially. It's also important to note that this kind of committee is not a grassroots, community-driven process. It does not expand the scope or representativeness of the people who are participating. It would be a Brown Act body following standard rules and regulations for public meetings and deliberation, and therefore would have all the same process-related strengths and weaknesses as the city's standing committees. In particular, people who are underrepresented at most of these public meetings because they lack the time, the resources, or the social capital to participate effectively would face the same barriers to engaging with an ad hoc committee, let alone to serving on it. So, you know, whatever the intention, an ad hoc committee in this situation is unnecessary, I think, and would have the effect of further delaying the review process and the eventual adoption of the plan. I think, you know, the extremely optimistic timeline you were presented represents still a delay of at least half a year past the current schedule, which is already delayed. And it's problematic for a number of reasons, because of the urgency of the housing crisis, the climate crisis, I would add the street safety crisis that the plan will help address, also because indeed, the city committed in its housing element to adopt this plan by the end of this month, and every additional delay puts the city at further risk. So I ask you to recommend that the council not create a new committee and instead move forward as expeditiously and inclusively as possible with your current review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Matt, go ahead.
Hi, this is Matt Simmons. I'm with the Redwood, sorry, Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, ROKER. I am asking you not to recommend the creation of a new committee. We are in a housing affordability crisis, and when I hear comments talking about how this process feels rushed, it just, it feels hard for me to believe that someone who would make that comment has had to look for new housing recently, or, you know, had their rent increase. People in Arcata who are renters are really desperate for more housing to be built. And this plan, you know, this plan is in the 2019 housing element, right? This idea of upzoning the gateway, because even back then, it was recognized that we were in desperate need of more housing. And that plan puts August 31st, 2022, as the deadline for that upzone, right? We're already blowing past that deadline. We don't need to add any more delay. Sometimes not acting is an action because it leads to the current problems just getting worse and worse. I'm really concerned that we're going to see more displacement from Arcata as, you know, new people move in without additional housing being built. And I really don't want to lose, you know, the friends that I've made here who are seeing their rents go up. And then my other point about why I don't think this is necessary is that the folks who have, who have concerns about the plan have already very successfully made their concerns heard and are getting responses from all of the committees and commissions that Arcata has, right? At the Transportation Safety Committee meeting, they recommended that they not do the K and L Street couplet, and instead, keep K Street a busy two-way street with L Street being a walking path, right? The planning commission, you guys are talking about limiting the height cap and the density even more. And so, to me, it feels like the folks who have concerns about this plan are very successfully making those concerns heard, and we're going through the process. And, you know, the plan is changing in response to those processes. And so I just, I don't think another committee really adds very much, except for a delay which we can't afford. So, again, I'm urging you not to make those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, I wasn't going to speak, just kind of honoring the idea that supporters of the plan, you know, just not. But I just wanted to counter a little bit what Colin and Matt said. And the first thing to say about that is, there are many of us here in Arcata who live here, who have been vastly disappointed by these supposed green groups that are acting quite imperialistically with their preemptive approval of gateway right out the bat, right before there was any public comment whatsoever on it. And they've been pushing it ever since, and they're really leaving people out. And that's the whole point of putting together this task force, is to bring people in. And, you know, Responsible Growth Arcata has done that, where the city hasn't. And I don't have confidence in the city's ability, or perhaps even willingness, to really reach out. Another speaker said, where's the mailer to everybody who lives here? And that's what I said, too. Where is it? We want to see it. A sheet with a website, and everybody gets input whenever they want, and they can review everything. Right now, we have a private citizen running Arcata One, which is good, but it's not the city, you know, reaching out and providing information. So I want this task force created. I have a lot of trust in the people who are running it. I think it's essential. And again, I want to reiterate that my great disappointment in these groups to step in preemptively and really kind of shut down the people who actually live here, who are trying to have a say in this process, and along with basically city staff, shutting down people who live here. The fact that David Loyah could completely stiff the planning commission with the requested changes, and preemptively and unilaterally change an agenda, you know, that's insubordination. And I'm surprised that the planning commission is actually allowing it to happen. And, you know, I just don't feel like the people who live here are going to be heard if we don't have this task force. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Una, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Una Smith. I'm a resident of Arcata, and I want to share that my experience of the gateway plan has been through a lot of media, and I've gotten a lot of emails and a lot of notices. I've had a lot of opportunities to participate. I also acknowledge my job is in planning, and I am a known bicyclist, so maybe I pay attention more. But then I'll also add that there are signs in my neighborhood about the gateway plan. I also have a friend who arranged a tour that David then gave to her and her friends on a Saturday. So I appreciate the public process that has been going on for what feels like a year. I'm not sure I'm right about that. What I will respond to in the presentation is a little bit what you've already talked about, but that slide of the flow chart does seem to show that everything runs through the advisory committee. So that might be reinterpreted or redone on a future presentation. I also want to just advocate for working with the standing committees to have more than two or three minutes. Those committees are very open to getting things put on their agenda, and then that gives everyone time to really work through the kinds of projects that Mr. McBain brought up as an example. And then, lastly, I just want to say that it concerns me, talking about doing something like a survey to ask something as complex as, what is the maximum height you would want a building? Because there are, as everyone paying attention, I think, knows, you know, there are a lot of trade-offs. If you have a three-story building versus a six-story building, just theoretically, there are pros and cons about land use conservation, energy conservation, aesthetic, pros and cons, maybe all bad for some peoples. But just to say, you know, what is the tallest building you would want, I think it'd be really hard to do without giving context to be able to say that you've gotten a good response from the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Una.
That's all the public comment online.
Okay, so we're going to close the public comment section of this. Does anyone have any follow-up questions for staff at this point?
Yeah. Are you looking for a recommendation or anything, or is that up to us to decide whether or not we would like to recommend anything?
That's up to you to decide at this time.
And I'll also add that the city council, I believe, is also getting a similar presentation that's scheduled for the 17th, I believe. And the city manager did indicate that what might be helpful for the city council is if the planning commission could agree on any topics from this list or other things that may be useful for a different group to review as opposed to this commission. They'd be interested to hear that.
Yeah, I think this is hopefully going to be one of the things that will be on the agenda for the August 23 meeting between all of us and the city council. And at that point, it seems that there'll be opportunities to discuss with them our concerns and those members' concerns. And I'm not sure that a majority vote, a recommendation, do we want a committee or not, is really going to provide the input that they'll need to make a choice to indicate if there is going to be some additional body, what form it might take. This proposal is a citizens' proposal, but it's not necessarily a proposal that an action right now by us will make any definitive choice about. It's, I think, something that would be good to deliberate on, but not necessarily to vote on as a formal recommendation to the council when we're about to sit down in the same room with them around the table, anyway.
One thing we don't know is whether or not that'll be on the agenda of the August 23 meeting.
I think we can recommend perhaps whether it should be on the agenda or not. That I would like to recommend to have on the agenda.
But it's up to the council whether or not.
Absolutely. But we can certainly recommend whether we want to discuss it with them or not. And, you know, even if it's not on the agenda, in a study session, any one of us has an opportunity to bring up topics of concern.
It's our understanding that it likely will be, and I believe that we're going to be talking about that later on in this meeting, so.
Sorry, did you say will or won't?
Will. I believe that it probably will come up in that meeting. That would be my assumption. I can't make any guarantees, but that's my understanding.
It probably won't be the majority of the time.
Is it possible for city staff to briefly summarize the variety of outreach that the city has conducted to try and get people involved? I realize that's sort of throwing a hand grenade over at your table, but it seems to me that the city can try any number of ways to get people engaged, but there's no guarantee that people will elect to engage, and that a lack of engagement doesn't equate to a lack of effort on the part of the city. And I would just like to sort of review some of the people talked about, efforts that seem a little redundant to me. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a first crack at this, and then Jen's going to follow up. Yeah, yeah. Well, the best place to look for information that's been collected is the draft engagement report, which I believe has been linked to the full commission. It was presented to the city council at the beginning of June. Some of our engagement has been more visioning citywide, some of it has been gateway-specific, some of it happened before the release of the draft plan, and that was mostly walking tours. And then we've done dozens of meetings with the public and committees and the commission in the time since. Many of them have, you know, had time-limited options, but we're always available for, you know, speaking. We've always made ourselves available to the public. And also, one thing that Commissioner White spoke to was trying to get more diverse feedback. We agree and have been trying really hard to do that. It is difficult, particularly with disenfranchised groups that are, you know, less in the practice of coming out and making themselves heard. One thing that we are currently working on and have been trying really hard to pull together for more than a year is a racial equity working group. We are right at the cusp of having that, which is really exciting. We're about to come under contract with Blank and Orem Partners, hopefully, fingers crossed. That's Sharon Blank with the Eureka Endillo ACP, and Meredith Orem, who is associated with Equity Arcata. And it sounds like we'll also have some support from staff from Humble Area Foundation. The way we're planning to structure it is a series of six meetings. Participants will be paid for their time, and we're working with them to try to pull together a very racially diverse group. And they will have the opportunity to choose, you know, their area that they want to focus on. I'm assuming the gateway will be part of that, as well as other elements of the general plan, um, like recreation potentially or land use. Um, and some of the information we've gotten related to racial equity has already been included in the draft engagement report as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like we'll be, um, touching on this at our study session. And that's the most we can hope for?
I just would like to say a couple more things if I could. Um, I, somebody in there mentioned that, or perhaps out here, that, um, sometimes these things work best if there's very specific goals, like study group, specific questions to be answered. I can imagine that scenario, a super broad, you know, reinvention of, um, us almost, like what, you know, I kinda see us as a Gateway Advisory Committee right here. Um, and starting back to ground zero, which we did like, what was it, nine months ago? Um, with a whole new group feels so redundant that it, I, I just can't imagine it in a way. Um, however, if there were really specific goals to help, you know, get the word out or bring information in and present it now and then, something like that, I can imagine targeted, specific kind of goals. Um, that would hopefully facilitate and speed up the process rather than slow down the process. That's.
Um, I just wanted to speak to what Dan said. I do like that idea of being more strategic and targeted. I did wanna say that lack of engagement doesn't mean that people don't care. Um, it does not equate to that. And, you know, Greg Daggett had pointed out that he had asked, has there been a citywide mailer? I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I think we talk about privilege. The people that are here have the privilege to be here. Not everybody has that opportunity. If you're a working family, both mom and dad, you have five children, you can't be here. And those are the people we need to somehow reach because their voices count too. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we can move on to our second business item, which is consider the Gateway Area Plan with Emphasis on the Design and Community Benefits Chapter. Do we have a staff report on that?
You do. I'm wondering, um, before we start, this is gonna be probably like the doozy presentation of this evening, if there's an interest, um, in taking a short break from the commission or if we should just move right into it?
I would be interested in a short break.
Okay.
Can we take like 10 minutes?
I promise I will pick it right back up.
Opportunities for breaks. Coming from Mr. Cal.
We'll be back in 10 minutes. Welcome back. We are, we are back in session. We're back in session. Hi, everyone. We're back in session. So before we go, D-Lo, before you get started, can you, what about, what's your timeline for this, uh, business item two?
Meaning like how long will it take? Completely up to the commission, it could take 15 minutes, it could take an hour. The final item, the, well, the second to final item, the land use element, will be pretty fast. It's mostly just a report and an opportunity to ask questions, but it's obviously not the full element, so this one will take longest. But it depends on how long you guys wanna take and how much you wanna try and get through tonight versus deferring until a future time.
Do we have a hard out for anybody? Is there any time that everyone needs to be walking out the door or?
Turn into a pumpkin at nine.
What time does everyone turn into a pumpkin?
Nope.
Do you just wanna wait and see how we feel?
Nine oh nine thirty.
Okay.
I'm just not.
Okay. So let's, let's get through it. Okay. Do we have a staff report? We're on business item, uh, number two, Consider the Gateway Area Plan with Emphasis on Design and Community Benefits Chapter. Uh, and we have a staff report from D-Lo.
Okay. So I'm gonna go through this fast. I think, um, you know, it's already been mentioned at the meeting, but we're about nine months since, um, we released the draft Gateway Plan. Um, we had originally been messaging the plan would be out for about a year, um, which would put us about 75% of the way through to completion. Um, as noted, we are past that already. Uh, the draft engagement report that I mentioned was released in June of this year. We have a study session in exactly two weeks. It's, uh, Tuesday after next. And we will dig a little bit into, um, you know, what the expectation is for that session, but planned for about two hours. The majority of the time will focus on building height and associated, um, community benefits. We also will likely be talking about circulation as well as, um, the timeline and process for Gateway Review, and that's the piece of that agenda that would speak to, uh, the proposal for an advisory group. As David mentioned in the last planning commission meetings, uh, committees have been reviewing the draft document. We have gotten, uh, recommendations for approval with modifications from five city committees at this point. We're still waiting on, uh, Wetlands and Creeks and Forest Management Committee, which Jen is going to next week, this week?
Thursday morning.
This Thursday morning at 7:00 AM. We are committing to having the, um, modifications from the committees that have adopted modifications in the draft by the end of this month, with the, uh, exception of Wetlands and Creeks because they don't meet until September. And what we have currently been, um, planning for under a modified schedule is adoption of the entire infill program in early 2023, and that could be March. Um, it could be later. Um, fortunately, unfortunately, we're kind of in flux at the moment, so there is opportunity to, um, reevaluate as we move forward and try and both be timely and thorough in our review. So discussion topics, I'm gonna go through the five that were, um, suggested by the chair. I'm also going to go through the three topics that we heard at the commission meeting, uh, last time we met, which I guess was just last week. And I'm hoping after that, we can, um, get some guidance from the commission about where they'd like to dig in and spend their time. So the five discussion topics submitted by the chair are, one, do we want to recommend limiting the maximum building height? Two, do we want to recommend limiting maximum building height in certain districts? Three, the second chapter of the Gateway Plan, Community Benefits, page 48, List Seven, Amenity Categories. Which of these, if any or all, do we consider actual amenities and which, if any, do we consider standard requirements for all projects or certain projects in certain circumstances? Should we require setbacks from the sideways or shall, I'm assuming that means sidewalk, and I did not catch that, sorry. Setbacks from the sidewalk or shall we allow structures to be built right up to the sidewalk? And finally, do we want to recommend maximum residential density caps as was discussed at the last meeting? So those are five definite meaty topics and there's some overlap with also what was discussed at the August 4th meeting. Um, there was some discussion from the chair about private, providing some policy-specific feedback, um, as well as potentially narrowing the range of amenities. Um, there was a comment from at least one commissioner about removing certain types, um, and kind of clarifying what the intent of those community benefits or amenities would be and separating them from standards for all projects. And finally, there definitely seemed to be an interest, uh, in making recommendations for key areas of community interest and specifically building height. I heard commissioners throwing out four stories, six stories, um, and not limiting based on what's currently in the draft. And, um, I just wanted to also take a quick pause and just say that these are really big and complicated decisions. That's been mentioned tonight, um, by members of the public who have definitely urged you to both speed up and to slow down and definitely be thoughtful with this work. Um, and we definitely appreciate all that you are already doing and you bring a lot of value to this process and we really appreciate it. and we really appreciate it. And, you know, we definitely want to ensure the commission feels like they're making progress on this document. We're definitely here to support that and provide any clarity that we can on whatever issues seem to be the most important to the commission before we have that study session on the 23rd. So we can take this whatever direction you would like to take it, and we are here to support in any way we can.
Well, that was fast.
That's not all, I should say. Sorry to interrupt you. Sorry to interrupt you. For these, for these three bullets, I did prepare, I prepared content. So for these three areas that were discussed at the last meeting, we can dig into any of them, and I will provide sub presentations to this presentation, but they're short. So, sorry to interrupt.
So gee, we want you maybe, do we want her to continue first, or do we want to, yeah, please do.
Okay. So I will just keep going.
Hey, can I, sorry, can I just jump in for a quick question? If, if we continue, are we going to maybe tackle these one at a time as a commission for discussion's sake? So should we just do one and then stop and hash it out, see if we want to make a recommendation or not?
I almost want to do that, so at least if we aren't able to finish, we have a clear, okay, this is where we ended, so next meeting we'll start. Yeah.
Okay. That said, is one of these, should we change the order or just go right down the page? I retire. Well, I'd rather do number two or three if we had to choose, but I just don't quite know where we're going with the provide policy-specific feedbacks.
I think I'd like to hear D-Lo's mini presentations upfront, just because these issues are closely related to each other. For example, the amenities and density and height, I, I, I want to hear how she's going to link them together because the draft plan certainly does that. And so what we're going to be asking, being asked to comment on are, among other things, how those linkages take place, and that's where our policy recommendations will probably need to focus or not focus. So I'd love to hear the whole presentation.
I'll keep it very brief then, so you can see what the content is of the slides, and then we can go back however you want. So it might also be wise to have me run through the slides and then open for public comment and come back for discussion if you would like to go that route. It's complicated stuff, which we all know. Okay. So policy-specific feedback, I'll just go through this really briefly. I believe these were the three policies highlighted by the chair. We can obviously go through any additional one. Chair Visay Delcock, would you like to share anything about any of these three? It's, these are the three that I captured, so G, A, 9A, 9S, and 9P, specific to creating transitions between different lower intensity uses, car-free lifestyle, and using enhanced architectural features as community amenities.
You're asking me what my questions were?
Correct.
This is from last time. Hold on. I wasn't prepared.
We can also come back to it. It's completely fine if you would like to come back.
I don't, I'm going to have to look at my notes. I'm sorry. I should have looked at this before.
Okay. So I'm going to move on to the next section, and again, if we do want to dig into policy, policy-specific feedback, it sounds like that may be the least on fire for tonight, so we can come back to it or not. That's completely fine. Building height, so this is the doozy. So you have quite a few options on the table. This will be something that you'll be asked to speak to at the study session. As one commenter put it very articulately, you are able to limit not only building height but also placement, separation between uses. You could require a certain number of tall buildings to be located by zone. You can get creative. You are not set by what is currently in the draft, and we're definitely open to ideas for what would make it more palatable to people who have concerns about shading and other factors. But some of the options that came up from the last commission meeting and will be explored in much more detail at upcoming meetings are purely limiting to four stories, which is essentially the current height maximum, limiting to a higher number of stories in targeted areas, and that could either be done with a discretionary process or by using our community benefits program, or a similar option would be going up to eight in targeted areas with those two options as well. So, very, very high level. The greater the height, you know, there are benefits in that you can create more housing in less space, and there's a greater opportunity for developers to offset their costs. If you lower the height, you have less of these potential benefits, but you also, you know, gain more community support and address some of the concerns that have been raised about tall buildings. And there will be more presentations, specifically our town hall next week with our Form-Based Code Consultant, as well as the August 23rd meeting that will give you a lot more detail as another commenter mentioned about all the different trade-offs, and really kind of trying to unpack this for the commission and for the council. And some of that will include 3D JS, which I know is just this magical unicorn, but it does exist. And David actually, right before he left, recorded some of that material that he plans to present at the 23rd meeting, and I'm working with our video team right now to edit those into chunks of material that we plan to upload hopefully by tomorrow. And the intent of that is to try and give the commission and the council and members of the public as much time as possible with the material before the meeting, because it is important, and hopefully it will help clarify some of these questions around setbacks and shading in advance of that meeting. So if a determination is made by the decision-makers on the 23rd, it won't feel sort of like a hurry-up-and-wait situation for the public. So we are trying to get that out as soon as we can. And density bonus law was something I also wanted to touch on really quickly. I am not an expert, but I know that at least one commissioner, Commissioner Mayor, was at a presentation that happened today, and there were questions that came up about this at the last meeting. And it appears, you know, with an expert who completely understands the law and has seen a lot of cases across the state, that not having a floor area ratio standard or a density cap, neither of those things will exempt us from requiring projects that request it to enjoy the benefits of density bonus law and being granted certain concessions that they request if they're able to make certain arguments about it making the project more cost-effective. Unfortunately, you know, we did try and get a little bit more clarity on that in the presentation, but it doesn't seem like the implications of that are completely clear to staff even. Unfortunately, this is coming from the legislature. They have good intentions that sometimes get really complicated, and a lot of jurisdictions are trying a lot of creative things, including Arcata. So there are going to be some hurdles to figure out how that's going to be navigated. And increased height is likely something that would be on the table as an allowed concession for both subsidized projects, so subsidized affordable projects and market rate projects, and that would be increased from a base height standard if we went four stories or higher. And they actually uploaded this recording to YouTube earlier today. I wanted to include this link. I can also send it out to the commissioners, but for anybody watching, it's available. It wasn't exactly, you know, the answer to all of our questions, but I thought it was helpful, and Commissioner Mayor, if you wanted to, you know, just say anything briefly about anything you learned from that.
Thanks, D-Lo. I was actually going to say something later, and, and the bottom line is it was really scary. And if, it appears that if Arcata were to link our density bonus program to a community benefits program and think that we will then have a firm handle on what developers want to do as far as density and building height goes, we are kidding ourselves. There is as yet no clear policy from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and there is no case law about how these things will be decided. So we would be the guinea pigs, and if we get it wrong, we're stuck with it because state housing law would probably require us to give the developer the option to go denser and higher than our guinea pig plan would have thought that they could. This is my paraphrase, but this is, this was the bottom line that I got out of this. So it seems that the Department of Housing and Community Development may come up with guidance on this at some point, and it's for sure that the courts are going to start deciding cases for other communities that have attempted to use community benefits programs in conjunction with things like density bonuses, but the state isn't there yet, and so we don't really know what it's going to take to have predictable results. And I think that the, the guy from HCD, Brian Heaton, seemed to just indicate that working, you know, in conjunction with the state as they develop these guidelines is probably going to be the, the best that we can do. So scary, unpredictable, and, you know, this is sort of a legal, we don't know land at this point. And, and so the scheme being proposed in our draft gateway plan is something whose results are not entirely predictable with regard to what it's actually telling developers they can do or can't do. Anyway, back, back to you.
Thank you. Bone of the friend.
I didn't want to say it quite like that, except you asked for my reaction, and, and there it was. Scary.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. So, back to building height. The, as far as we know, based on a conversation we had with city leadership today, the study session will likely poll commissioners and the council on height by zone. This is currently what's proposed in the plan. I starred the Creamery District just because, or the Creamery Building, so you could kind of see where that was in all of this. So for each of these four zones as delineated on the map, commissioners would be asked, you know, what is the maximum threshold based on the information that will be provided by staff at that meeting, kind of trying to lay out some of the relationships between height and open space, setbacks, shading, et cetera. So that's what I prepared on height. Nothing, you know, too complicated. I'm going to leave it to others to hit you with all of the ins and outs of everything, but it sounded like the commission was interested in at least beginning that conversation to prepare for the study session, so if you want to, there it is. For community benefits, there's a lot of information on these slides, so I apologize in advance. But the review of what is ultimately the refined list that was sent to you today, and you have a printed copy, and there are some here from members of the public if they want to look at them as well. Partially, that information came from the interviews done as part of the infill market study. Each committee made recommendations. The full recommendations are in the community engagement report draft. There also was a pretty explicit question asked about this at the housing element meeting back in 2018 or 19, so there was some feedback based on that as well. And then members of the public have also submitted a fair amount of comment on this and have provided some ideas of things that they think would be adequate to allow for additional building intensity or parking reductions and so forth. So the plan has these seven areas as currently outlined, housing, arts and culture, open space, green building and sustainability, active and alternative transportation, enhanced architectural features and design, and retail and job creation. And all of these have kind of boiled down to these three main areas of interest from the committees. It sounded like there was definitely interest in payment into funds for, you know, both beautification as well as trail connectivity in open space, as well as things that would create additional housing and provide services to members of the community. And here are, you know, just some of the specific recommendations that these various committees have made on things that relate to alternative transportation and trails, specific recommendations that have been made from various committees related to beautification and investment, and specific recommendations related to housing creation and community services. And it has been mentioned by, I believe, Commissioner Barstow, you know, this is a housing plan, what would be the additional housing component that would be worthy of an additional benefit on top of the overall, you know, intent of the document in the first place. So that is something to consider. From the public, we have heard energy efficiency as a major area of interest, and that would be obviously above and beyond what's currently required by state law and Title 24 standards, anything that would create a mix of housing types and affordability, as well as, again, that community-serving infrastructure, and that includes trails, parklands, and arts contributions. So what I have noticed in some of my analysis of all these different sources of information is that job creation as one of the seven amenity buckets, as well as enhanced architectural features, have not really seen that much press to date. I guess that doesn't mean that there isn't interest in those, but I don't think the public has really latched on to that or been inspired by that. And all of this is boiling down to a couple of questions that we plan to ask at the workshop next week, and I think we would be very interested as staff to receive feedback from the commission on any additional ideas that maybe should be added, or just any thoughts about how to frame this for the public. And so this is going to have a lot of content on it, and I apologize, but I'm going to list out all of the different options we're going to give folks who attend that meeting. And the question would be framed as if we had a limited number of up to eight-story buildings in one specific area of the gateway area, that'd be the Beryl District, and it would be designed by architects and obviously pass any related building code requirements and engineering specs for soil suitability and so forth. If all those things were true, what would be a benefit that you think would really create such an exciting project that was so good for our community that you would welcome it, or at least tolerate it? And the first option is no benefits are adequate. A second would be a high percentage of affordable rental or for-sale units. A third would be actual open-spaced lands dedicated for park or trail usage or creek daylighting. And again, these are things that staff has generated based on what seems to be the areas of interest for members of the public. Housing projects in partnership with local tribes, housing projects in partnership with artist housing developers, an actual contribution to an art or beautification fund, and that could go to a public art agency, it could be held by the city for art in the gateway area or citywide. Parkland or trail improvements, again, citywide or within the gateway area and contributions to that fund, a lead platinum building, or other additional benefits that were significantly beyond what's required by Title 24. And then finally, some sort of alternative transportation package that could be offered to all residents of a development, could be, for example, bike parking plus bus passes plus a car share program. So really trying to get people to think both big and specific, and then... And then finally, we would like to try and better understand of these main areas that seem to be most interesting to folks, do you want to see a mix of all types or a focus on one particular topic? And I believe that is the end of my slide deck, so where would you like to start?
Do we want to start with the questions, the five questions, one at a time, and see if we can get anywhere on those? Do you have those?
I have to just say, I loved that last two slides of your presentation were just fabulous together, the, you know, eight-story building in some certain area, and here's some community benefits, which ones do you like or not like or none? I thought that was just super well-phrased and...
Thank you. Yeah, we really scratch our heads thinking about phrasing of questions. It is difficult.
Sorry, I didn't answer your question.
Well, I thought we would just...
Sounds great.
See if we can get through any of these.
Yeah.
Questions. So the first one is, do we want to recommend limiting the maximum building height? And then conversely, do we want to recommend limiting the height in certain districts? Those two are pretty much related.
And Chair, do you prefer to hold a discussion with the commission and take public comment after?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to take public comment.
Aren't they seeing that?
Let's open this to public comment.
I'm running a lot off of notes right here, and a couple of things, especially, we do live within the Beryl District, and it does stretch all the way past Seventh Street. My concern as far as that goes is you built the buildings right up to the street, like there was a proposal for storefront. I think it's going to negate all the discussion we've had about the solar shading, you know, and it is where the neighborhoods begin. So I might suggest to start with that maybe it could be a discussion about, you know, where it might be an issue with these eight-story buildings, and this is just coming off the top of my head. And the other thing that concerns me about this is we just talked about the potential for bonus densities, and I'm guessing that engineering wouldn't allow it, but there's a situation where if you do affordable housing to a certain percentage, they can show a 75% bonus density, and I don't believe you're going to see, you know, what would that be, a 14-story building happening, but it doesn't mean that that kind of scenario can occur. So I think it's something you need to consider when they start to define these, and then also the neighborhoods. And another couple of thoughts written down. You know, just, I think it's going to be important to see examples of what the form-based codes will be, you know, just to ultimately start to, it's going to allow for defining numbers versus, like even on stories, you know, you might be able to get back to talking about actual feet. You know, Fred talked about six-story buildings that were more compact because they didn't go quite as high, but they still were functional. That'll come out, you know, you might be able to talk about the actual feet that you're going to get in setbacks and talk about, you know, these step backs and allow, if you're going to go to these larger buildings, you place them and you site them away from the street where it still actually goes through with trying to handle the solar shading and addressing these things. That was some of it, and I did just start jotting down because there are people who do, at some point, want to own homes, and, you know, we've looked at so much and we've started to learn so much about this. And I was just thinking if property is available either in the gateway or in future infills, because it will be all over the city, to, you know, start to think about, these are just ideas off the top of my head, I know this would be at the development level, but, you know, possibly 50 by 50 lots or smaller, you know, and in that particular case, the emphasis could be on the backyards and not the front, you know, the tiny homes, similar to what's happening in Southeast Street and Sandpiper, common wall construction, you know, and that same idea of smaller subdivisions, and something that might give homeowners a chance in this. Anyway, that's about it. Looks like my time's running out, and thanks.
Hi, my name's Patricia Kamenica. I'm going to keep it really brief, but I just had, I mean, there's so much I could state, but I'm going to point out two things. The districts are really broad in this gateway plan. I know there's some talk from different people, even somebody on city council at one point way back when, talking about taking the districts and breaking them up even smaller, so, because even if you look, like if you look at the Beryl District, it comes all the way up to Seventh Street and all the way up to the Creamery itself, that block, and then the Creamery is kind of surrounded by seven stories. So the, you know, the Beryl District, where people think, oh, it's down by, you know, it's down over by Samoa, but it doesn't, it comes all the way up and just bumps into Eighth Street, and I think, you know, and it's bordered by Seventh Street, so I don't think people realize like how broad those are, so maybe we could think about like breaking up those districts in a little smaller so we could do larger buildings and then kind of stagger them down when we get into those buildings. And another thing I have that always hits my ear hard is the in-loo fees when we're talking about doing these in-loo fees. I know Park and Rec brought it up of talking about taking that, those monies and putting them into parks outside the gateway district possibly and not focusing on the gateway district. And I think if we're going to put so much infill in the gateway, those in-loo fees should stay within the gateway. I know there's a couple of things that Dida went over, talking about spreading that out to the rest of Arcata, those fees, and I think they really, you know, if we're putting that impact on a gateway, that should really stay within the gateway. So those are my two things, so thank you so much.
I would like to address the outreach again because, I mean, it seemed to be the answer is, what I was asking and also what everybody knows in infill projects is that you reach out to every single person in the city, and that's through mail, I mean, that's just basics 101. So I, that wasn't done, so we don't really know what everybody thinks. It's just, I don't know what they think. And how many people are looking at the website? I mean, it seems like the way we find out information is going to the city website, so it would have been an interesting question, how much of your percentage of your population is just going to the website to know what's going on in the city? As far as the maximum height, I don't have a really opinion on that. I lived in Miami, I lived in like a fifth floor for a number of years, I lived 23rd floor. It just, they have different feels, it's just they're appropriate in certain areas and then they are not appropriate in other areas. And I just feel like you're missing the biggest point is that the first thing you need to ask yourself is, is it safe? Because you're building it on wetlands area. You had a grand jury report that came out that specifically said, don't put high buildings on a mud surface, and you're going to vote, it seems like, without getting those answers, so it just seems like a very odd thing to me. And there are consequences, I would say. I put out a pretty passionate response to the question of the tsunami zone because basically there was good people in Japan, and they said, it's okay to build here, you're going to be fine, you know, and things changed. They didn't foresee how strong an earthquake was, that the land would drop three feet before the tsunami came, and the end result is 19,000 people died. So I would really address getting those answers before you start saying it's okay with eight, six, four, whatever. I think you need to really get a professional to lay it on the line because you're putting the city at risk, you're putting people's lives at risk. I'm not against the housing projects, I just want it done in the correct way so that people don't die. A lot of people died in Miami. Maybe you need to literally check out what happened there. The city is put on the line, it's over a billion dollars for one building, so if you don't get this right, you could financially ruin the city, you could have a lot of potential problems, and, you know, they're even looking at like who made these decisions at the last minute? Who added two extra floors onto the building that might have caused it to collapse? Who in the city wasn't doing a proper inspection? So these are serious issues that need to be addressed with experts. Thank you.
Dila, could you get the slide of the zones towards the end there? Thank you. I'll be quick. I know this is a general discussion, and some of the things that people have been bringing up and discussing are more specific. I'll mention that the commission can not just take the list that's presented, but add to the list. I'm sure you have your own ideas about other amenities. I made my spreadsheet, I assigned a relative value or weight of what any amenity might be, because there are, some are more important than others. There's mention of architect design, I think most buildings are architect designed, several places are architect designed. The, there's mention of discussion of four buildings in the industrial area that are for eight stories there. There would be more than four buildings, I think. That's roughly 29% of the area of the gateway plan. And between the eight-story and the seven-story, it's 46%. So there's a lot of space there, and as Patricia pointed out, the eight-story zone goes all the way up to the back of the Creamery Building, includes Tomas Building and just the, right near the Eighth Street right behind Creamery, and beyond that, it's seven-story. The Commissioner Mayor's comments about the density bonus, you used the word scary, it's extremely scary. It seems to me, and this is all new, as she says, but the density bonus could add two or three stories to the height of whatever you designate, whatever the city designates. That's it for me. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Would anyone prefer to read along? Would that be easier? I just have copies.
No.
I know it's late, but I always get droopy eyes at the end of the day.
Hi, my name is Kristen Crooks. I'm the Government Affairs Commissioner for the, not commissioner, liaison for the Humboldt Association of Realtors, and I'm here today to ask that you guys move the housing owner, I'm so sorry, the ownership opportunity from a community benefit to a standard requirement for certain buildings. It's no secret that Humboldt County and the state are experiencing a housing crisis, coupled with the rising homes and rental prices. Members of our community are being priced out of house and home at a much higher rate. A recent article in the Times Standard, which I'm sure we've all read, stated that you have to make around $21 an hour to afford a modest one-bedroom apartment in Humboldt County, and Arcata's general rentals are priced quite a bit higher than that. Beyond the national rise in sales prices post-pandemic, statistics indicate that Humboldt County prices rose faster and higher than the national and state average. In June of 2022, the California Association of Realtors reported that the median home price in Arcata was $510,000. With a median of nine days on the market and only 10 active listings, and I don't know if you've tried to get a house in nine days, but it's very difficult. To be clear, though, to afford a $430,000 home, a household would need to make around $85,000 annually, while the 2020 census report placed the median household income in Humboldt County at $49,000, just a little over. And that doesn't include a lot of disenfranchised communities that weren't able to make that. We feel that the Arcata Gateway Plan really aligns with the goals of providing more housing, and we're so excited that everyone is putting so much effort into making sure that this is getting more housing in our community. But at some point, we do have to stop reacting, and we have to start planning for not only our current problems, but the future problems. Creating more supply with a diversity and price range will help alleviate the rising home prices and provide a pathway to the best way of building generational wealth, which we all want for our family, our community members, which is home ownership. In the 2019 to 2027 Arcata Housing Element, Arcata states that its goal is to provide housing opportunities for more people of all income levels through the development of a wide range of housing types. It's already written to the policy HE1, which is the first policy mentioned in the 2019 to 2027 Arcata Housing Element, that it encourages a wide range of housing types, and I'm going to skip ahead because I'm running out of time, sorry, guys. Not only does homeownership actively help the community, it also helps children's health, children's behavior, it helps their education, graduation rates, and even lowers asthma rates in adults and students. It's so important to make sure that we're including a housing element or housing requirements for the community. If you have any questions, my contact information is there, and then you also have some charts and graphs on the backend and some links to a couple of fantastic studies that go over the benefits of homeownership for the general community and for disenfranchised communities. I can email that to you. And then I did drop off a couple of vacancy housing reports for Arcata with the staff as well that I can email to them and they can share with you, and a economic research analysis done by the CAR's chief economist on how encouraging rentals versus homeownership actually could affect the entire economy of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any members?
We do.
Okay.
We do. Go ahead, Colin.
Thank you, hello again. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. As you know, we do strongly support the plan because it provides a blueprint for walkable, bikeable, transit-oriented development, which will improve safety and livability in the community, provide desperately needed housing, and help protect the region's wild and working lands from development pressure. We do, as you also know, have some suggestions, and I'll address some of those that are relevant to tonight's topic of discussion. So regarding setbacks, although there may be appropriate property line setbacks if the sidewalk is built partly on private property, I know that's been a topic of discussion, there should absolutely not be setbacks from the sidewalk. It's a well-established planning principle that building to the sidewalk is key to providing a welcoming and engaging pedestrian environment. Regarding building height, we support the heights currently indicated in the draft plan, and we would not support a height limit any lower than six stories. Density, which is closely correlated to height, is absolutely necessary to support walkability, bikeability, and public transit improvements, as well as provide sufficient housing. We also suggest increasing the minimum height, the three stories, to ensure that the buildings that are actually built provide the densities required to support a walkable area. As time passes, regarding the community benefits, we suspect that some of those benefits initially eligible for the incentive program are likely to become required standards, and just ideas of community benefits will likely evolve. And so regarding that benefits schedule and system that's being set up, we would encourage the plan to include a regular schedule for revisiting the incentives and the list of eligible community benefits, so the newly required standards are removed from the list of eligible benefits and new benefits are added as appropriate. Also regarding that program, we would suggest the city might wish to place some guide rails on the builder's choice of benefits, so that, for example, the developer has to choose from benefits from a number of different categories, including transportation, as well as things like housing and the arts. In its present form, the draft plan is already a huge step forward for the city toward providing affordable, livable, healthy, safe, low-income neighborhoods, or, excuse me, affordable neighborhoods. And, you know, with a few tweaks like the ones we've suggested, we think it could be even better, but either way, I just want to encourage you, again, to move towards approval of the plan as quickly and effectively as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Go ahead, Jane.
I made it home. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak yet again. I do want to, by the way, before we go any further, commend staff for all the outreach work they have attempted. I think it hasn't in many cases been as effective as they would have desired, and it's been targeted toward more general comments than specific things like building height densities, setbacks, the things that are the objective standards we need to deal with. And the issue of building height and its feasibility in specific areas, that's part of what should happen with the advisory committee and having experts in a little... of what should happen with the advisory committee and having experts in a little subcommittee really dig into that and be able to provide the experience of civil engineers and wetlands people and things like that. My understanding is water's three feet down. What does that mean for buildings? So I think that issue of understanding where we can actually feasibly build buildings of that height is really important to understand before we designate exactly where we think we want to have buildings of that height. And I think that provision for density bonuses, which it's not clear to me whether it's just increased density or whether they're talking about increased building height. So if we set something like eight stories, then we might end up getting stuck with 10 or 12. So we don't want, I don't think that's where we want to go. So I think we're safer if, if the law is now that if a developer comes to you and you have eight stories, and he says, okay, I'm going to have 20% affordable units, and I get a, and I'm not clear about this, 25% or 75% bonus in terms of building height, that's kind of scary. That totally changes the dynamic. We need expert opinion on what that is going to mean for us, and thus, what standard, whether we should start at four or five. But if, if that is really in existence, then we need to not start at eight, because we might end up with 12. So that's an area we really need to examine before we try to say this area needs this, there's, that area needs that. We need to evaluate feasibility from a civil engineer's standpoint and wetlands people, et cetera. What is feasible to build here? And are there parts of this area where it is feasible and parts where it's not? It's possible that a long, small building is exactly, Boulevard, pardon me, is exactly where we should not be putting it. So I, I think we really need to get some expert opinion before we start setting these, and I don't think we should accept what's in the plan and in the current district locations as where we want to be. Yes, we want to build more housing, but we want to build smart. We want, we want to build what we can obviously afford. We're trying to make affordable units. But increased height and increased density doesn't always mean, if there's that level of demand, doesn't necessarily mean affordability. So we have to figure that out.
Okay. Thank you, Jane. Thank you. Thank you.
Matt, go ahead.
Hi. I know it's getting late, so I would just reiterate everything Colin said. And then another amenity, it's already in the plan, but it's, it's an important one, is mixed-income housing, you know, having buildings that aren't 100% affordable but have that, you know, some affordable units within a building, I think is just such an amazing benefit and worth adding more stories for. Thank you.
All right. Public comment period is closed, and now it's time for deliberations or us to try to make a decision. And going back to those five questions that we had regarding max height and all that sort of thing, now that we know, which I brought up last time about the Cali, the state density bonus law, we really need to figure this out because some of these, if you have a very low income, I mean, you can have like 50% that we'll have to provide, and we really need to know the details of the state density bonus law before we can decide what we want to do as far as height, in my opinion. Because we don't really know, like, so if we say, oh, we only want five stories or six stories, well, they can come in and we could end up with double that. And we really need to have that information before we make, can make a decision, I feel like. What do you, what's your opinion? What do you think? Judith?
At the session this afternoon, the representative from the, from HCD made it very clear that HDC, HCD does not yet have a policy that would provide any certainty whatsoever to a density bonus, community benefits, planning scheme, so that we could be guaranteed to know that even if we've already provided a community benefit bonus for a high proportion of low-income housing, that the, the state wouldn't acquiesce, on our behalf, in fact, to a developer's demand to go denser or conceivably higher. And there's no case law right now to tell us for sure what the state would decide. And, you know, Delo, you were there, I, I may be overstating that, but, but I don't think I am. And of course, you know, with, with the university being above and beyond our regulatory control on this issue anyway, we have an additional actor there that could plonk some very dense, very high buildings in places where this plan has specified we don't want them. Although I, I think that guidance from a plan would certainly, you know, create opportunities for the university to be a better neighbor and, and acknowledge what the community has said in a plan they actually do want. So that I, I'm pretty convinced there ought to be a way to write height and density rules in an Arcata Gateway Plan that would withstand efforts by developers or the state to then squeeze extra out of it if it's clear that the way the plan is written has already taken those things into account. There's, there's, there's got to be a way to do that, but there's no case law that says that there is.
So what about, like, in this plan, that whoever came up with it, it wasn't us, right, they have no maximum density. So is that just a disaster waiting for hap, to happen as far as the state density bonus law?
This is clearly beyond our ability to resolve.
Yes, it is. Yeah, we, we can't resolve it right now. And, 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 you know, I think right now, one of the nice things that we could do is actually, you know, discuss with each other rather than, you know, stage-long statements. So I
I have a thought that because we can't resolve the building height possibilities, you know, with this HCD dilemma, and we also don't know the geotechnical specifics, why don't we just assume that neither of those are the case right now? That we can build up to how many stories the plan shows on each of these sites based on geotechnical, and the density thing isn't going to make them go higher? And then just have a discussion how we feel about what's presented? Because we, we at least can get our feelings out about that. We, we don't know the enough information about either the soil issues or the density law. So either we get stumped on both directions in the conversation, or we at least sort out where we're at with what's presented.
That, that sounds reasonable to me because we've been skirting around this issue for months, and we've never actually talked, talked it out with each other.
This is going to sound really naive. I just wonder why we're having the conversation. We're getting the cart before the horse. Why are we not having those conversations about what can be built before we talk about what we want?
Christian? Here's an, here's an, here's an alternative.
Well, we have some, you know, honestly, you know, from my experience working in the Humboldt Bay Area, we have, we have incredible environmental constraints. I think that will be recognized in the permit process once the, you know, once the reports are developed. I can't tell you how much time we've spent working on, you know, my other position I have in regards of trying to get, you know, our corridor dealt with. And, you know, there's significant environmental constraints in regards of constructing something with that sort of foundation, you know, even up to eight. You know, once we start going beyond that, you know, we're, you know, just like my comment before, it's like, you know, the considerations into, you know, that we're taking to go up in the air, we needed to think about going into the ground, because ultimately, you know, these are significant structures, you know, and require deep foundations. And, you know, part of that is, you know, the cost-benefit analysis of that, you know, can, can they even afford to construct the foundation for an eight-story structure that's going to withstand a tsunami or a seismic event? You know, all these, all these requirements that are required, you know, through building code, you know, it's, we're, you know, it's one of those things, it's like, who's going to stamp it? You know, you know, obviously, these sorts of structures here locally, you know, the people that actually build these, you know, HSU, or, or, excuse me, Cal Poly Humboldt, or, you know, for Department of Transportation Works and so forth, they're, you know, they're not from around here. You know, and largely even the, you know, for instance, in transportation work, you know, a lot of the expertise is not here locally. It's Sacramento-based. So, you know, so there's a lot of constraints in regards to the design criteria, the environmental constraint aspects, you know, and really focusing on what, how high it should go or how low it shouldn't go. It's, it's really, you know, it's going to be, it's, once, you know, the work is proposed and they go out and do the investigative work, you know, we'll really find out whether or not it's actually feasible. But, you know, we got to put something down on paper in saying, like, these are our limitations and so forth, because this is, you know, we're planning it, we're not constructing it. So, you know, that may have, you know, bearing in regards of what will actually happen out there. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Well, based on what we learned tonight, I don't feel like I can make a decision regarding maximum building height or even maximum building height in certain districts until we know more about how this state law is going to affect.
I, I think what was clear from this session this afternoon is in the time constraints that we have for the Gateway Plan and the general plan, we're not going to know yet. I don't think those things are going to be decided, or the means to figure it out will be decided at a state level during the next few months. And so it, it seems that for us to be able to have a sense of the limits of what we would like may be the best that we can do at this moment. And to just put, put that out there because it, it will probably be the job of some, some, some legal beavers to then write that in a plan form that will actually get us what we want and prevent what we don't want from happening. So it, it does seem like explaining what we want and what we don't want is a first step that we should go through. And, you know, even if we change the format of the planning process, it would be great to hear from you all.
Okay. Well, some recommendations we could talk about also is the community benefits page, the amenities. Do we want to go through, through those, or do we want to really just?
I want to talk about, do we want to recommend limiting the maximum building height?
Okay.
You put that question out there, and, and I think that's something that we can talk about. It's still a step away from putting a number on the height.
Okay, then let's do it. Let's start at the table. Let's start with Christian. Number one and two, you can either answer that together or separately, how, whatever your thought processes are.
I think we should definitely convert, you know, discuss the maximum building height and for certain, and it sounds like from the public, that, that we're concerned specifically in regards of certain districts and that opportunity, you know, whether or not we want to make it a district-centric thing, or it's, you know, great gateway area in totality, you know, where, you know, eight, you know, story building here, eight-story building here, all over the place, or do we want to actually consider districts to kind of, you know, be considerate of, you know, comments said by the public? I feel that's more the direction we probably want to go. And that will kind of probably tease out, you know, maximum building height in general. So considering the district aspect and then, you know, specific heights associated with that district.
Would you like me to pull up the map? Wouldn't that be helpful?
I, I, I have it right here. Yeah. 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 And I just, also too, it appears like the eight-story bit doesn't go all the way over to K Street. It kind of goes along L Street. So there is a buffer between, you know, some of the community, but it's, you know, proposing story buildings in that corner is going to be something. So, but I think we should look at it definitely from a district perspective and breaking it up for the districts, because it sounds like that's what the public wants.
That's what the plan suggests as well, though. So you're saying as presented or less than is presented or?
I'd say as presented at this point, because that's what, you know, that's what we're going off of.
Could we go back to that list of questions again? Sorry. Okay, thanks very much. Yeah, I think we should talk about maximum building height. I think it should be geared not only to certain districts, but given that we would be dealing with a form-based code with regard to street-facing and 360-degree design, we should actually be talking about street frontages and front and back views as well. And when we're talking about maximums, of course, that's, that is going to recognize that, you know, safety constraints would come in there and probably potentially further limit those choices in specific locations. So, yeah, I, I would like us to discuss that and to make recommendations. And, you know, if, if, if those are further refined over, over time, that's great. And I also think it's really important to write the plan in a way that our recommendations already take into account whatever density bonuses a developer or HCD could spring on us, and that's going to require some pretty intense lawyer scrutiny, and, and then hoping for the best and, and working with HCD to make clear that we, we want to build housing, but we don't want surprises.
So you didn't answer the question about the map as presented?
Um, yes, I did, actually, because I think we need to go further than going just by district. I think we actually need to address specific street frontages. David Loy said in our last session that we weren't going to do that in the force, form-based code, but I think we actually should.
Would you go up to eight stories anywhere?
No, I would not. No, I would not. Um, but that's not the question that we're addressing right here, so.
Building height is building, we have to, we really have to tease this out as a group.
I, I thought we were deciding if we're gonna make a recommendation, not what the recommendation should be.
I think any and all information would be really appreciated by staff.
My feeling is that there, there's really no place in Arcata that, um, would benefit from an eight-story building, um, and particularly not in an area where it would block views of the bay and potentially pose a safety risk to its inhabitants. I could imagine some six-story buildings with the upper stories beginning at the third story significantly set back to preserve, um, access to light and views, um, and setbacks to allow for greenscaping, um, along street frontages. Um, and, and I recognize that, um, we've had some members of the public who, who've said that that's not a good planning practice. I'm kind of saying that it, it, it is in our case.
May I also, you know, suggest, request that, um, you know, if members of the commission have general thoughts about the layout of the zones, specifically Barrel District being the most intensive, um, neighborhood-facing zones being the least intensive, and just kind of, you know, support, or not for that philosophy, that would also be helpful.
Okay, yeah. Um, my feeling is probably that that Barrel District needs to be further subdivided, and that, um, if there's gonna be any work done on, um, an L Street pedestrian and environmental corridor, rather than turning it into an arterial or, um, main, um, north-south or south-north route, um, that, that we need to look seriously at, um, the implications of higher buildings, um, in that area especially, so.
Actually, I've kinda lost track of what we're talking about, but, uh, one thing to bear in mind is that, uh, these, uh, building heights as proposed are conditional on having the proper amount of amenities, uh, included in the project. Uh, so, you know, really what we're talking about is kind of high in the sky, uh, and Christian made a very good point, that you can't just go out and build your building without doing the engineering. So, that's gonna happen, that doesn't have to be in our plan. And in fact, uh, I can't think of any part of the, uh, the land use code or the general plan that, uh, makes, uh, buildings in any areas contingent on what's, what's, uh, what is feasible engineering-wise. That's just not a factor that we take into account, cause it's, it has to be, uh, determined project by project. So, anyhow, um.
What about the hillside restrictions? What about the hillside and steep slope restrictions?
Well, yeah, there, there's definite rule there, about 15% slope and so on. Uh, but, uh, yeah. Otherwise, I, you know, I can't think of any, uh, any place in the code that, that requires you, or that actually designs the code around what might be possible to build. I mean, we can't, well, it, it, it's not knowable without, uh, doing the, uh, research and the, the testing. So, um, one interesting thing that I think I heard in the, the, uh, presentation today from, uh, Brian Heaton, was about the state density bonus, uh, law, that if you have, if you're doing a project with 100% low income or affordable housing, uh, there is no limit.
That's in the very explicit, specific case of being located near, uh,
Oh, near and here, uh, yeah, yeah.
Or whatever, and there are none in Humboldt County, so.
Right, right.
That particular scenario would not apply yet.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, that's right, it applies where, uh, there's a, uh, what do they call, a transportation node, or something like that. And then I also gather from what Judith said, that she's worried that if, uh, our, our, uh, code allows an eight-story building, uh, based on the, uh, community benefit, and somebody goes to build an eight-story building, that if, uh, for example, they have a certain number of, uh, affordable housing units as part of their project, and they can go higher than that because of the state law. So, uh, that, and that is a possibility. Um, one thing we might think about, it's kinda radical, is, uh, to stick with a, uh, four-story, 45-foot limit. Uh, and the, the, uh, anything higher than that would be done through the, uh, the state density benefit, uh, law. Uh, so, we wouldn't have to deal with it. We could throw out all this stuff about, uh, categories of community amenities, uh, which I have a problem with anyway, uh, and I guess this is a question, if, for example, we talk about arts and culture, and, uh, we enumerate, uh, community amenities, public art, murals, pedestals for sculptures, performing arts spaces, and so on, so on. If those go into the, uh, general plan, uh, does that mean that that, that's what we've got? Now, a lot of the, uh, the, the real details about, uh, how this, this, uh, area will be developed, specific details, uh, will be determined when we do the, uh, uh, the code for the area. Um, and, you know, my, my worry is that, once you have, uh, put these things into the general code, that's, that's tantamount to, uh, having them in the, the, the code. So, if we felt, for example, that, uh, performing arts spaces weren't a, uh, a, um, a good community benefit, that we didn't, we decide we don't want that, uh, would we have to retain it simply because it's already in the general plan? The general plan has certain specific, uh, requirements in terms of, uh, design and building. Uh, not very many of them, but there are some specific ones that, uh, then I think kinda tie, tie your hands when we do the, uh, the actual code. So, anyhow, as I said, if we just, uh, made it real simple and, uh, restricted the whole area to, uh, four stories or 45 feet, uh, and simply allowed increases based on the state law, uh, would certainly make, uh, everything easier, and, and it would also recognize the, uh, the, you know, the actual situation that the state, uh, is mandating certain, uh, increases in density and, and heights of buildings.
Given the reality that we're surely not gonna have clarity on the state during the scope of time with which we need to just make this decision, and my general agreement with Dan's position that we might as well express our opinions, putting that aside, since we're not gonna have that information anyways. As far as some of the engineering concerns, I hear that, but that's not, I don't think that's up for us to try to incorporate into the zoning, that, that will get hashed out project by project down the road. I, given all that, I think the plan as proposed, uh, with, uh, tiered heights per district, um, is reasonable, and I would support that.
I guess I'll go ahead. So, I agree with everything Judith and John said. Um, I, uh, let's see here, I, I would kind of feel like be in favor of changing the districts a little bit. Um, we don't have to accept these districts, we can break them up, and I would prefer the higher or the, the larger density prop, um, projects to be out in the Barrel District, but I don't know if it can support it. Um, I almost feel like we need to make the projects as small as possible, because we know they're gonna be probably double. It's uncomfortable not knowing what the state is gonna make us do, um, uh, other than what they said. I almost feel like the smaller projects, like four-story or more, or less, or up to four-story, I mean, if we're really in such a hurry to, which we are, to bring in housing, those would probably pop up right away, uh, faster than an eight-story would. But again, I agree with what Judith and John said, and I am in favor of, um, limiting the max building height, actually lower than what we have proposed, because we know they're gonna, it's gonna be a lot higher. And, um, I do think that, um, some of these districts do call for larger, and some of them do call for smaller, and I agree with Judith also, where, um, you almost need to go street by street, um, and, and see what, what is gonna fit on this parcel, and what's not going to, um, you know, solar shading and all that kind of thing, so.
Um, what John said, pie in the sky. I think that kinda sums it up. Um, I just feel like having the conversation with all of these unknowns is just very difficult. I will say that I do like the idea of the maximum building height within certain districts. I would like to break up these districts even further, and I would like to look at, I guess, the worst possible scenario, and then decide the building height, because that could happen, and I don't want to have a surprise and say, oops, well, we wrote it, we gotta live with it. Um, so, yeah, um, can I say what she said? He said? I mean, it's, it's a lot, and I wish I could be more definitive, um, and I count. I failed you, sorry.
Um, I also was part of the H C D webinar today, and, um, I get that that stuff's confusing, but it was very clear that if we don't provide housing at a certain scale, that likely builders will be applying to the state, or, or just for passing right through Arcata's planning and development procedures and going to the state for their permits. And, um, I feel like, I, I also re-watched or listened to the Ben Noble presentation, and I've listened to a bunch more, uh, form-based code stuff, and I feel like it's a very thoughtful, progressive, innovative way to develop a pedestrian, um, user-friendly atmosphere. The buildings flow together, they, they work with each other, it's planned very intentionally. And I think what we're forgetting in this conversation about backing off on a lot of what's presented is that we'll probably lose all of that. I, you know, we can build four stories tomorrow in almost all of that district. There's then no gateway plan, there's no reason, we can just stop this. It feels like if we want something more than that, than the sorrel building times 20, or whatever gets built, um, that we really need to stay engaged here in this, uh, what's been presented is ambitious. When I get out of the area and visit some of these areas that have what I think this infill looks like, often I'm enthused, I, you know, there's street sculptures, and there's plantings that I like, and there's little parks and things, and as a pedestrian, just looking for a cup of coffee or something, I, I enjoy walking through them. Um, I know it's not what we're used to in Arcata, and eight sounds like a really tall building, um, but I, I still wanna stay engaged in what could be. There's a lot of space down there. When I look at eight in the Barrel District and think about the distance from town and the softening that it can, that can happen with other, um, slightly shorter buildings flanking it, and the stepped-back stuff, um, then I think, well, and, and then seeing that amenities page that was the last slide of the presentation, and thinking, what would you, when would you accept an eight-story building? And there was some super cool amenities on there, and I like this amenities process. I like the idea of working with the builders in this form-based code and letting them pick the things that they want, and maybe, once they've picked their amenities, depending on how we sculpt this whole thing, they have to come back through us to say, these are the amenities that are going to that project, and we get to approve, or disapprove, or the council does. And it's not just some rubber stamp it, you know, down the hall here, but there's a little bit of review, and we might say, um, no, their interpretation of that park thing isn't what we thought the code, I don't know, I, you know, there's, it, it doesn't feel like we're just giving this over to some massive, you know, out-of-town builder that's gonna come and do all this. Um, there's a lot of process still to go. This form-based code thing is, um, I'm getting more comfortable with it, the more I learn about it, like, a lot of cities are doing it, a lot of very progressive cities are doing it, and coming up with some really exciting results. Um, and the amenities are part of the whole thing. It's just, it, it kinda all is a big project together. So, um, when it comes to building height, uh, I, I could give up eight if that was the momentum. I'd like for us to start getting real on numbers, because I think the public needs to hear, and then have something to respond to. Um, but, down at the Barrel District, I would go eight if I got some of the amenities off of that page. Um, the sevens through the middle of the project, uh, or district, I'm a little less comfortable with than the eights in the Barrel District. And generally, five and six, I just don't mind at all. Like, seeing the sorrel, it's done, and nobody's really, it just, it's like when they built the Plaza Point, right, adjacent to the Co-op, I thought it was, wow, this isn't Arcata, look at this thing. And then it was pretty, and now it's totally insignificant, except that a whole bunch of people live there, and, um, and it's just there, it doesn't matter. It, it doesn't affect the downtown, it's, it's just infill, and we all got used to it real quick, and it used to just be a parking lot, um, for a car lot. Anyway, um, I, I just, I, I appreciate the plan, I'm willing to flirt with going off of eight, but there's not much else I wanna give up on this whole thing. And I do think that we all need to wrap our head around this L Street artery pretty soon, because the Barrel District is, has no other way to get to it. If the L Street thing doesn't go through, then the only way into it is Samo Boulevard, or little things like Q Street or something, I guess, I don't, you know, so I, I think we need to tackle that one pretty soon. That's all.
I need some guidance here. So, what is it that you need from us?
Honestly, not much right now, given that you will be asked this much more explicitly on the 23rd. So, I think mostly this is just helpful for the commission to try and understand, you know, what are the main options and sources of, um, you know, concern in areas where we need to go back and do more information to be prepared for that session. So, if there are any other, you know, questions you want us to prepare to address for the 23rd, apart from what we've already discussed, we'd be happy to hear. 23rd, apart from what we've already discussed, we'd be happy to hear it. That's all I can think of at the moment.
So these questions that are the discussion topics, is that what you're talking about when we have our study session? Is, what other, is there anything you want to add to that? I tried dislicit, and I didn't get any from anybody.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to get some explicit discussion about the community benefits and the amenities program. I would actually suggest cutting out those two tire, those two higher-tier levels for benefits altogether that are related to the seven and eight-story buildings. And I, I would like to explore the possibility that we look at necessary open space and publicly-owned public space designations now, before we go any further, rather than attempting to bargain for them as community amenities offered by developers later on. This is good planning. It's good environmental planning, and the HCD has made it very clear that the direction the state is going is that once density levels or once housing is indicated as possible on any land, and I think the direction they're going is probably mixed use as well as housing zoning, we're not going to be able to redesignate that land for anything other than housing unless we compensate for it somewhere else. So I think it's extremely important that we designate locations within the gateway now for publicly-owned public space, not privately-owned public space, and that we start getting the resources necessary to acquire those lands for the public under city ownership. And that, that's kind of a basic tenet of conservation development these days. And Arcata can do it, and we should.
Yeah, she's brought that up before, and that's such a good point. Will we have time on our agenda to talk to the council about that? Or at least give them, drop the hint?
I mean, it isn't currently agendized, but we can definitely pass that on, and then it's up to the, the vice mayor to decide what's ultimately on the agenda.
How long will we have at that meeting? How long is that meeting?
I believe it's two hours.
And what did they have on the agenda for us? Because we haven't seen that yet.
I do. Yeah, I did present it, you know, generally a little bit earlier, but it's basically building height, L Street. And, you know, where do we go from here with the process and the timeline of the gateway plan? Kind of feeding into the advisory committee suggestion, and those are the three topics. I think it will likely take close to two hours, if not the full two hours, and that's without taking any comment yet.
And then I would like some direction from the council on how we can get through here. This feels like we're, we're struggling to get through just this one chapter. I don't know. And this is so different than when we've worked on the general plan. It's just completely different. So I don't know if we're doing it right. I don't know if we're doing it wrong. I don't know if there's a better way. We're finally talking, this was a good meeting, we're finally talking about, you're making some decisions and expressing our opinion, and maybe we can actually agree at some point what we're going to recommend to the council. So maybe we are doing it right, but I, anyway, that's something I want to talk about. I want some direction from the council on how they want us to proceed and get through this someday. So.
I completely agree, and I do think that, you know, the process piece is exactly intended to be that, you know, what will it, what will it take? What does the planning commission need? What does the council need to reach, you know, reach a plan that is adoptable, you know?
And it's my feeling that we have spent immensely more time on the gateway project than the council has, that they are generally way, way behind on this information overload, right? Is that true?
That is accurate, yes. You guys have spent a lot more time on it than the council has at this point.
Okay, so it's 9:30. We are, this, we need to, this needs to come back again. We didn't finish. So this needs to, we need to bump everything again, and this needs to come back. Do we have time to do the review and consider the information presented regarding the land use element update? Do we have time to do that? Is it quick? Are you guys too tired? How do you feel?
It's really up to the commission, but I'm seeing some faces suggesting that if we try it, they're going to pass out, so I.
I don't think you're going to have our full attention.
Probably not.
Do I need a motion to?
Yeah, just move it to a date certain.
To a date certain? So what, what would be the date certain? Would it have to be two, two meetings from now?
Yeah, it would be September because your next meeting scheduled is the study session, the 23rd, so I think I can look that up.
September 13th.
Yeah, I moved that we moved this to September 13th meeting.
I'll second.
May we say aye?
Aye.
So just to, to clarify really quickly, that would be continuation of both the design and community amenities chapters as well as the report on the land use.
Yes, as presented.
Excellent.
Okay, so we're going to move quickly down to, this is item four, consider study session topics. We've kind of been talking about that all night. I don't, do we have any, I don't think we have anything to add, right? Because we don't have anything left, any more room left on the agenda next, next meeting.
Yeah, I think we've just got, would you like direction about how to get through this process, or you would like direction about how to get through this process?
Yeah.
Maybe more timely, I don't know. But yeah, discussion on process, which is on there already, so yeah.
Correspondents and communications.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the 16th Town Hall meeting only a webinar or?
It's only a webinar.
And is it Ben Noble again?
It is.
And is Ben Noble presently, we're in contract, the city's in contract with him, to develop our Form Based Code, correct?
Correct.
All right. I would highly recommend that we all try to attend that so that we all have common language.
It will be also recorded after the fact.
Okay.
So that's one of the benefits of having it purely be a webinar, as well as the instant polling.
Great, thank you.
And all of these recordings or the links are on the city's website?
On the website and on the YouTube. We have a SERP playlist on our YouTube.
Okay. So is there nothing else? Then this meeting is adjourned.